They're by curves.
I know. Trying to get everybody's attention. Folks, come on in. There's some seats up front if you want to sit up front.
Get close, let's get close and comfortable.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the London Derry Town Council meeting for March 2nd at 7:00 PM. All, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. As is our tradition here at the London Derry Town Council meeting, we take a few minutes to say a little prayer for our first responders. Think about those people who serve us here and abroad and keep our country safe. Please take a moment of silence. Thank you. So, hi folks, how are you? So, my name's John Farrell with the London Derry Town Council. We just want to go over a few ground rules for tonight. Alright, so there's a lot of people here tonight. As you can see, we have the fire department here in the room. In the event of an emergency, follow their direction and evacuate at their direction. Please follow exactly what they say. We do have emergency responders right nearby in case someone doesn't feel well. So, we're going to cover off a few quick things here at the beginning and then we're going to get into the program. We have one agenda item tonight. We are going to have public comment tonight. In a formal town council meeting, you come here to these chairs here in the middle and you give your name and your address. That's so that we can capture this in a public meeting and we can capture it for our minutes. There's also guidelines for public comment. You get about five minutes, okay? But if you need to go longer, we need to have more questions. The reason we put guidelines on it is, is to get everybody a chance to ask their questions. Not one person dominates the, you know, the public comment. So, we try to move through the comments so that everyone gets an opportunity who wants to speak and wants to speak about a subject. A couple of quick things that we just want to take off the top here. There are a couple of different, I'm going to call them water issues only because they're in different areas of the town. There's some issues behind Apple Tree Mall in which we met with that neighborhood yesterday with about forty or fifty people and talked to them about the contamination that took place at Apple Tree Mall. That's different, but may be related at some point, I don't know. I'm not an environmental engineer to the whole picture around St. Obane and PFOAs. We have the Department Environmental Services here tonight to talk to you about that and to help educate. But let me give you a little history and background. Little history and background is that we became aware of this about four years ago. About four years ago, the St. Obane plant, it was discovered that they were discharging various different chemicals, PFOAs being, you know, some of those chemicals, into the wastewater treatment plant in Merrimack. In Merrimack, this was something that had gone on. I don't know how long it went on, but the discovery goes back about four years. The council, the town manager, state reps and everything talked with federal officials, with the president at that meeting, at the particular one that I was at, Senator Ayotte was there at that time. We've been talking to the Merrimack officials for the last four years. We looked at, the state had looked at, and they're going to get into more of the legalities of what they looked at and the state took the lead on that. And the position that we were in is that we were working off of something called seventy parts per trillion. And this seventy parts per trillion stayed in place until the end of September and October 1st. So, what we've learned in the last few months is that we're all getting educated on what does all this mean? And, you know, and how does this all affect us? And if you're at fourteen parts per trillion, which is what my house is at because I'm west of High Range Road, alright? What does that mean? You know, what is seventy parts, what is fourteen parts? What does zero parts mean? What does it mean that when we look at the surface waters here in town, running from the five or six different surface waters we have, from Cohoes Revs War over to all the other lagoons and surface waters that we have here in town that run anywhere between twenty-six and six? What does that all mean? So, in October, DES, Jeff and Clark were here and they'll introduce themselves and they talked to us about, you know, what some of that stuff means and how we started to get educated and starting to understand what was happening to the water system here in our community. We started asking questions about, how's this affect the aquifers? And Clark can correct me at some point, but when he explained the line at High Range Road, this was a line that was agreed to in a legal settlement. Whether it stopped there or not, that was what, correct me if I'm wrong, the Attorney General felt they could defend. Okay, so that's why High Range Road was where sort of that line was picked. During that period of time and over the last few months, a lot of things have been said on social media, okay? Social media is a great venue. Sometimes it doesn't have the most accurate information. What I told the folks here yesterday was, is that up here on the council is about eighty years' worth of community service. Three and a half years ago, I got diagnosed with cancer. I live in that area and drank the water for the last twenty years. I got my three-year clean bill of health today after having surgery on December 7th, 2016. We get it. We're not happy about it. We're upset about it. The problem is, is trying to find out, what do we do? And we've been banging our heads against the wall trying to figure out, what is it that we do? What steps do we take? What do we do as a community? Wells are private property. They're not run by the state, they're not run by the town, but the state sets the regulations. Outside of the state representatives who are here in the room and the people who heard this question yesterday, does anybody know what a Dillon Rule State is? If I told you that Massachusetts is a home rule state, do you know what that means? So, Massachusetts towns can enact a law that's stronger than state law. Here in New Hampshire, we're not a home rule state. The legislature sets the agenda, they make the laws, we follow them. So, we take our guidance from the agencies who regulate and do these pieces. That's where we get our guidance from and that's where we act from. We're more than happy to find, you know, a party that we can go after. Now, a few things going into this. I talked to Jeff at DES about two weeks ago and I talked to our Public Works Director. To put in public water is about a million dollars a mile. And we have two hundred miles of roads in this town, including all the state roads. Everybody can do the quick math on that, right? To put in a wastewater treatment plant, and remember, we don't have a source of water. Our source of water, we'd have to come up with some sort of community well system or we have to go to Manchester Water Works or we have to go to Penachuck. But to put a wastewater treatment plant in with carbon filters and to do all the reverse osmosis and to understand all the chemistry and everything, blink of an eye, fifty million dollars, maybe it's more. We're not really sure. But if I talk to my Public Works Director, he'll sit there and go, well, you're going to dig up all the roads and everything, we might as well put sewer in too. And he's right. I'm already in the process. So, now I'm at, throw another seventy-five million on and I'm at three hundred and twenty-five million dollars. To give you some sort of an idea, the tax rate here in town is nineteen...
Thirty-nine.
Nineteen thirty-nine. The tax rate for the town side of government is? Four ninety-two?
No, it's four, maybe four thirty-nine?
Four thirty-nine. Okay? Taxes, so what it takes for us to run the whole town, from the town side of government, police, fire, all of that. If I take out a three hundred and twenty-five to three hundred and fifty million dollar bond and put in public water, I'm looking at a tax rate on a twenty-year bond of approximately four dollars. Which is about, anywhere between a three hundred thousand to a five hundred thousand dollar house is twelve hundred to two thousand dollars on top of your tax bill. We can't just make that decision, the voters have to approve that. But it's been pointed out to me by some people who are even in this room and others, that doesn't necessarily fix the problem. Because Lake Massapeseck was at three point eight a couple of years ago, it's probably at six now. This isn't, and we really are starting to understand this. But you're also going to hear DES tonight talk about the standard which we apply today, that they can apply after the recent, you know, stay by the court, is seventy parts per trillion. And you're going to hear them talk about that tonight. Alright, so the format here tonight is that we're going to have DES talk to you a little bit and tell you about what's going on. And then we have some state legislators here who want to tell you about what they're proposing and we've got some ideas too. This will not be the only meeting. We will have more than one meeting about this. And we will continue to do it until we get an idea. Now, on their website, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, you have companies on there that do personal water systems?
We do, and I'm going to cover that tonight.
And cover that, and those prices can range anywhere between two thousand and five thousand dollars for a full house. And then there's also an annual fee to dispose of those carbon filters, which I've heard anything between two hundred and four hundred to dispose of those. So, anybody who's out on social media who says, "We're not doing anything and we don't care." Three of us were over at the Merrimack meeting and Merrimack came out and they said, and God bless Merrimack, they've got a head start on us here, but they've come out and said to St. Obane, "You know what? No, we're not taking it anymore. We're denying your wastewater treatment permit." One person over there got up and here's what they said. They said, "Well, I read the hundred and thirty-three page, you know, appeal by St. Obane, which was far less than their four thousand page, you know, document that they had for their permit." And said, "St. Obane says in their appeal, well, the water you're sending us has PFOAs in it." And the whole room just goes, "Well, yeah, because you started this." Okay, so we're going to get to questions, okay? We'll get there, we're going to get to that. But I'm going to move to DES first, okay? So, folks, you come up, you state your name, your address. Clark, who lives in Litchfield, he's here, he gets it. Is it your mom lives here in town or your mother-in-law? Mother-in-law lives here in town? Everybody gets it and everybody's pretty ticked off about it. So, we're going to take some steps to try to start to figure this out. So, before I go back up there, alright? Please don't be intimidated by us being up there. We're in the same boat as all of you. We don't know how much of this the town covers or all of what's affected. We're with you trying to figure it out. Any questions before I go back up there?
If we don't, sorry, if we don't stay here, I don't have cable, so is there another way that's posted on the town website where we can view this later?
So, the cable director is right behind you in that room?
Alright.
And he's going to, he'll be, there's a streaming mechanism that you can go in on the internet and you can stream the meeting. Okay? Good? You guys good to go?
Yep.
Alright, so we're going to turn it over to these guys, introduce yourselves please and we'll go from there.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Clark Friese, I'm the Assistant Commissioner of the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services. As is mentioned, I live in one of the impacted towns and my mother-in-law lives here in town. Going to go very briefly over the chemicals themselves. So, the compounds that are of interest are called PFAS or perinpolyfluoral alkyl substances. And that's a family of, depending on who you talk to, five to six thousand compounds. In the end, in this area, it boils down to two. PFOA and PFOS. PFOA is used in industrial processes and in commercial products. PFOS is used in commercial products and also a few industrial products, but mostly in firefighting foams. And so, depending on where you are in town and what you're next to, you will see one of those two compounds and those are the ones that primarily will impact whether you're above standards and should be concerned or you're below standards and you don't need to be concerned. There are, as I said, thousands of these compounds out there and they're used in everything. If anybody here happens to have Gore-Tex on right now, you got the compounds. If you have waterproof materials of any kind, generally you have the compounds. If you like to eat fast food and rest it on your pants and when you're done, you're amazed because your pants are clean. The paper had stuff in it. So, these compounds were invented back, actually originally for the atomic war program and then went into commercial use really in the fifties and sixties. And the reason they are so valued is because they don't break down and they're very good at separating things. So, in the case of firefighting foam, if you want to separate air from fuel, you shoot the foam in between and you don't get a fire and you go save lives. And that's one of the great things. I was in the Navy, they trained me on this stuff. It's a godsend, if you've got a fire. What the manufacturers didn't tell us is what they knew quite a while ago and that is that these compounds will accumulate in the environment because while they're so great at separating things, one of the other things they're valued for is they don't break down. They were engineered to be impervious and they are. They were extremely well engineered, unfortunately. The other thing is not only do they get in the environment, they get into us. And when they get into us, they stay in us for a very long time. So, when you think about most toxins, you think about something that very quickly hurts you. These are different. They don't hurt you really, really fast, but they build up and build up and build up and they sit inside of you for a really long time. So, even though their toxicity is not instantaneous, they have a long time to work. And so, this whole field of these chemicals that get out in the environment, stay in the environment, get into us and build up in us, really, the health effects are only becoming known now. And there's been research in the last ten years or so that's really accelerated in the last four years in particular. And with that, we have been working with the legislature to figure out what to do. The way the environmental laws of our country are set up, generally, we set federal standards and then there's a state agency that implements. And we're set up to do that. We are not set up to set standards. That's the federal government's job. That's not happening though and we have impacts and we need to deal with them today. So, we worked with the legislature and I apologize for the glasses. And two bills got passed, one in the Senate, one in the House, SB 309 and HB 1101, two years ago. And they authorized us to set standards for four compounds. They're the four that have the most science behind them and they're four that show up regularly in our water if we've got contamination. Again, PFOA and PFOS are really the key ones. We went through that process, the legislature was kind enough, they actually gave us bodies for once, which they never do. They let us hire a professional toxicologist and a health risk assessor. We got them on board, we set standards. They are, for PFOA, twelve parts per trillion. And again, a part per trillion is a little hard to wrap your mind around. Think of it, has anybody ever been in an Olympic-sized swimming pool? Very few of you. If you think you've been in an Olympic-sized swimming pool, you probably haven't. They're huge. They're fifty meters long, at least eight lanes wide and they have to be at least three meters deep. They're huge swimming pools. One part per trillion is a drop in around ten Olympic-sized swimming pools. So, these are extremely low levels, but again, they build up in your body and they increase in your body in time. And so, while it might be a part per trillion out there, it's higher inside here. And so, we went to set these standards and they are in parts per trillion. For PFOA, it's twelve parts per trillion, PFOS, it's fifteen parts per trillion. So, that got set September 30th of last year, they went into effect. It went through the entire standard lawful process. The JLCAR, which is the legislative branch that approves our rules, approved them unanimously. The day after that, a water system here in the state, a company here in the state, a farmer and 3M, who happens to be one of the original manufacturers, sued us, they win Superior Court and a stay was given. And that stay went into effect the last day of last year. And so, on that day, our new standards, what we call the health-based standards, basically disappear. And we go back to the old state standards, which are not drinking water standards, they're cleanup standards, ambient groundwater quality standards and they're seventy parts per trillion. Now, Jeff is going to run you through the investigation here in town and what you'll find is that seventy parts per trillion, you basically don't have contamination here in town. At the new standards, very, very few. You got a few. And they're not related to St. Obane. If you then go to the new standards, which don't exist today, but I'll go through sort of where we're at with that, then you have issues here in town, not all of which are associated with St. Obane. And again, Jeff will go through both of those. So, where we're at, as I said, they went to Superior Court. Why the in-state parties did, I don't know, I'll leave, you can ask them, maybe. I'm not allowed to. We were stayed, that does not mean that we won't win in court, we won't prevail. We have appealed both to the Superior Court for reconsideration and to the Supreme Court to have the stay overturned, to put the standards back in place. As of today, as of right now, and I checked my phone, I don't have anything from the Attorney General, we do not have an appointment to have either of those two heard. So, it could happen or it might be a while. In the meantime, again, working with the legislature, we got a senator to pick up a bill that had been on the table, Senate Bill 287, and to modify it. It went through a hearing and it has passed the Senate as of February 13th. And that would put the standards back in place and it takes away what the judge objected to, it's not there anymore. And so, if that gets over to the House, gets through the House and gets signed by the governor, the standards would go back into place. Because there will be cost impacts, there are a couple of pockets of money that are either proposed or exist to help out. And I'm going to go through from it exists to it's the furthest away from existing. The one that exists today is in the last budget bill, the legislature and the governor agreed to give us six million dollars to support ongoing activities. Some of that is to support investigations. In the four years we've been at this, that toxicologist and health risk assessor are the only people we've been allowed to hire. So, we've been basically doing all this work out of hide. They gave us some money and said, "You can go ahead and hire five people." So, we do have five new people who can help out with investigations. We have some statewide contracts that will help us in doing sampling. So, if the municipality, the town needs sampling or if a co-op, if you have a small water system needs support, we can do testing or you can access our contract. We buy in bulk, so we get a better laboratory rate than you can and that'll help a little bit. If you are a small water system, and I will read the definition because I'm not a lawyer, if you are a community, non-community, non-transient, non-community water system, collectively, small public water system serving less than five hundred people or produce less than twenty thousand gallons with up to fifty connections. We have been given a small pot of money. And the reason we focused on small water systems is you could be a condo association with ten houses. If you've got to go put eighty thousand dollars worth of treatment on, that's over twenty houses. If you're a large water system with a thousand homes, eighty thousand dollars is a lot easier to divide over a thousand homes than over twenty. And so, we've come up with, the legislature allowed us to pay for basically the design work. So, if you are a small homeowners association with a water system, we could pay up to twenty-six percent of your project. We've got a firm to go out and figure out what the design cost is. It's roughly twenty-six percent and we can do the testing for you. So, it'll help in lowering the cost a little bit. The next thing behind there is there is a bill, Senate Bill 496, that is establishing a PFAS fund. It has passed the Senate and has been re-referred to the Finance Committee, which has an executive session this Friday, if somebody's interested. That is allowing the bonding of fifty million dollars, which would provide low-interest loans to community water systems and nonprofit, non-transient, public water systems, so larger systems. And what this would allow is for us to put very low-interest loans with very favorable terms, no closing costs, a bunch of other things. We also could provide engineering services and contracting services. If it is a cost-impacted community, we can actually forgive a little bit so it becomes a negative interest loan. And then what is set up is if, we've got lawsuits against 3M and the other manufacturers. If we win, there's a pathway where that money would come in and roughly fifty to sixty percent of the loan would be forgiven. So, even if we don't win all we need to, to cover everything in the state, there's a pathway to help with that. The last piece, and I really want to congratulate you for having some very forward-thinking legislators. We had a couple of them come in and talk to us. There is also a trust fund in the state for drinking water. I happen to be one of the commissioners on it. They presently, by law, are not allowed to deal with private homeowners. But they're willing to take a look at are there some interesting ways, maybe a pilot program, to try and help private homeowners with the trust fund, even though that's not the purpose of the trust fund. What a couple of legislators here brought up is we could take a look at maybe coming up where the town could maybe apply on behalf of private homeowners. We could then get some trust fund money, maybe to be matched by the town and there might be some way to give a partial rebate. That's, as I said, I was going through the very certain money to the less certain money. The trust fund does have regular meetings, the next one's in two weeks. And they've said they're willing to listen if we can come up with a way to legally pass the money to individuals. Your town leadership has been proactive in helping us figure out what might work out. We're still designing that program, but if you had thoughts on that, obviously, the larger we make a rebate, the less any program's going to cover. Obviously, if the rebate is a dollar, that doesn't do any good. So, we need to find where in the middle ground a rebate would really help people go do the right thing without huge cost impacts and then try and work that through and get approval from the trust fund. So, that's sort of where we're at. Like I said, the big thing right now is the legal standard in the state is not a drinking water standard. It's a cleanup standard. Even when it is a drinking water standard, it doesn't apply to private wells. It only applies to public water systems. The investigation can cover more than that, it can cover down into private wells, but we don't regulate you. It's one of the things about in the live-free-or-die state is we generally have the state be hands-off at private homes. That also means that when something happens, the state is generally hands-off, unfortunately. We are, like I said, in particular, a couple of your legislators came by and we had some very interesting discussions to try and figure out some way to get trust fund money to apply. We're going to work on that and see if we can get that to happen. But until the standards come in place, we're sort of in this limbo. And I don't know, Jeff, you want to take it from there?
Yeah, I'll take over from here. So, my name is Jeff Martz, I'm a senior hydrogeologist with the Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau. The Hazardous Waste Remediation Bureau is tasked with providing regulatory oversight of sites that are contaminated with PFAS. So, tonight, we're going to talk in part about St. Obane, but there are other sites with known PFAS releases in the town of Londonary that are currently under investigation. So, I'm going to touch briefly on all of those. My primary focus again is on St. Obane, so I know the most about that particular site. Let's see, if we can dim the lights. So, this slide that starts out has a photograph of St. Obane. You can see they're drilling a monitoring well in the background, but I just want to point out that there's a tower on the roof of the St. Obane facility in Merrimack. In fact, there's several towers. And the source of the PFAS that we're talking about, related to St. Obane in the town of Londonary, is derived from air emissions that came out of the smokestacks and were carried through the atmosphere that either fell on the ground through dry deposition or through precipitation that brought the PFAS down to the ground. That PFAS made it through the soil, in some cases contaminated overburdened wells and in other cases worked down into fractured bedrock and has contaminated bedrock wells. So, this map on the left-hand side of the screen shows PFOA as dark-colored dots. They're colored red, if you can see that. And the town of Londonary is kind of highlighted. There's a LiDAR topographic relief map, kind of shows the change in landscape. Gives hydrogeologists an idea of what the geology is beneath the town. And as you can see, there's only a handful of dark-colored dots throughout the town of Londonary and those dots exceed seventy parts per trillion of PFOA. And as Clark mentioned, that was the standard that was adopted back in 2016. And the St. Obane site investigation at the time didn't identify any wells that exceeded that except for a handful up by the Londonary or the Manchester Airport. So, essentially, due to St. Obane, there were no exceedances detected in the early days of the investigation above seventy parts per trillion. The map on the right shows the same data points, but they're color-coded with a dark red circle if those levels exceed seventeen or twelve parts per trillion. So, the standard that was adopted last year and blocked by the Superior Court Judge. So, you can see there are a lot more wells throughout the town of Londonary that exceed twelve parts per trillion. So this map here is kind of a blow-up that shows sites that have known PFAS releases. Those are shown as the blue-colored dots. There's several scattered towards the northern part of Londonderry. If you can see my cursor, there's several in the vicinity of the Manchester Airport. Then moving across to the east, down the southeast part of Londonderry, there's Tinkham's Garage, a Superfund site, Apple Tree Mall, and there's a handful of other ones. These sites have monitoring wells where PFAS has been detected in groundwater onsite. And in some cases, there are off-site residential water supply wells that have tested positive for PFAS. Another thing I want to point out is this blue-shaded area. This is the area of, referred to as the St. Cobain Consent Decree. It's the area that they've entered a legal agreement with DES where they've agreed for responsibility of wells that exceed current standards. So as you can see, a number of wells inside that blue consent decree area, which more or less follows High Range Road. So everything on the west side of High Range Road is in the St. Cobain Consent Decree. And that's where we find a number of wells that exceed 12 parts per trillion. But if you recall from my previous map, none of the wells on the west side of High Range Road exceed 70 parts per trillion. Also want to point out that the maps I'm showing tonight, and I have a poster over on the other side of the room, those reflect data points for water samples that have been uploaded to DES's environmental monitoring database. So we know in some cases there are a lot more samples that have been collected, and they have not yet been uploaded to that database, so I have not been able to show them on a map. So there may be more samples in certain areas that aren't reflected on any of the maps I'm showing tonight. Also, just want to point out, there are some lines on the map that follow roadways that are colored in green. These represent roads with public water lines run along them. So they tend to be located primarily on the east side of Londonderry. Most of the area inside the St. Cobain Consent Decree does not have public water, and most of those residences are served by individual wells. Beyond PFAS, I just want to mention a little bit about arsenic. The town had the forethought to do a townwide sampling program. I think the sampling program dated back several decades. But in 2018, the town's consultant, Nobus Group, partnered with DES and actually sampled for PFAS, as well as other common contaminants that are naturally occurring. And the map I've shown here is an arsenic probability map for wells drilled in bedrock. This map was produced by the United States Geological Survey back in 2011. And what it shows is darker-colored areas indicate a higher probability of hitting bedrock fractures with groundwater that exceeds five parts per billion, which is a proposed DES standard for arsenic. So just want to emphasize that it's important to be testing your private well for arsenic, as well as the list of other naturally occurring contaminants on the left side of this slide. Also want to say that if, I have a brochure, there's sets of them at the front of the room. If anybody's interested, goes into a little more detail on sampling your well and getting it tested for arsenic and the other common contaminants. And that townwide survey that I mentioned, some of their data, they tested 32 wells for arsenic, and arsenic was detected in 24 of the wells. And 38% of the samples collected in Londonderry by the Nobus Group exceeded the proposed standard of five parts per billion for arsenic. I take a number of questions from residents on phone lines when they have questions about St. Cobain or PFAS in Londonderry. And I try to direct everybody to the DES's PFAS Investigation webpage. The webpage, the web address is at the top of this slide. And I just want to take some time to point out a few features. There's a lot of information here, but some of it's kind of tucked away. But some common questions I get refer to PFAS and private well testing. Also, there's a place on the website where you can sign up and let DES know you're interested in having your well sampled. And there's also information on PFAS treatment technology. And that's in the dropdown menu titled PFAS and Drinking Water. It's in the upper-left-hand corner of the slide where I'm circling with the cursor. There's also an interactive PFAS map. So I mentioned a lot of data for PFAS samples have been uploaded to the environmental monitoring database. All those samples get located on a map, and you can scroll through and check out your neighborhood on that interacted map. It's under Maps and Data. One thing I will point out is that if you type your address in and it zooms in really close to your house, the map, the air photo background on the map may go blank. You have to zoom out a little bit, there's some pluses and minuses on the left-hand side of the screen. You have to zoom out a little bit to get that map to regenerate. In the upper-right-hand side of this dropdown menu, there's a frequently asked question document that has answers to questions about health effects and how the MCLs were set. And then there's a series of blog posts on various PFAS topics. Some are related to St. Cobain, some are related to the court decision on the MCLs. But if you scroll down the page, and there's a lot of blog posts that provide pertinent information on the status of the St. Cobain site investigation and PFAS in general. And lastly, I'll point out, if you scroll down, it's not visible when you first bring up the website. You're going to have to scroll down quite a ways. But there is a place to subscribe for email alerts to new updates to the blog post. So that's a place you can sign up and get up-to-date information when there's a new post on the website. So Clark, do you have anything to add?
Just if, where he says the frequently asked questions, that is coordinated and was generated with Public Health from the Department of Health and Human Services, so it does have health-based information. There are a number of good answers in there that we do find people find are useful. Please do sign up. Jim Martin is our Public Information Officer. And we do try to get information out. If you're on the email list, then you will get regular updates as things happen. Sometimes people don't want that because they only want to know what's going on for their town. This is for the entire investigation throughout the state. But we do put a lot of information that people find to be valuable, even if it isn't just for your town. So please do sign up.
Good.
Yes, sir.
Will you take that slide down? Leave the lights up a little so we can see what we're writing?
Yes, please bring the lights up somewhat.
Yeah. And this slide package will provide to the town, and it'll also be on our website. You don't need to write everything down. Our email address is des.nh.gov. And there's a blue banner at the top that says PFAS Investigation. All of this is underneath there. If you just click on that, it'll take you to everything Jeff has just shown you.
We're putting this on our front page, right?
Yeah, we'll have this everywhere. So, all right, so folks, while I have you here, we did have a meeting today about the COVID-19 virus. The Emergency Management Director is here in the room. If you go, you'll see a press release in the morning, and there is also on our website, and it's also being released through the email system at the schools, all the direction from the town on how to move forward. The fire chief is the Emergency Management Director, and will be taking charge here in Londonderry. So with that, I think I have a state legislature who is going to tell us what they're doing, and then I'm going to move to all of you as quickly as possible. Sir.
Thank you. My name is Doug Thomas, I'm at 143 Mammoth Road, and I am a state legislator here in Londonderry. I also sit on the Science, Tech, and Energy Committee, so I am somewhat familiar with some of these issues here. For instance, it was my committee where we first learned about the air transfer from St. Cobain to the water supply, and we took action on that. And we fully support the legislative action that took place last year. And I was the one that called the meeting to discuss the details with DES last week. And I invited Representative Dolan, primarily because he sits on the Town Council, plus he also sits on the Municipal and County Committee as well. And we did have those discussions. And we totally agree that there are some things out there that can be worked on. I have a well, as well as 80% of the people do here, so I'm also very interested in that. I am aware of the Senate bills that are coming through the Senate. We have supported the ones that have come through the House, as it says here unanimously. And my main focus here is to keep track of what's going on. With anything else that we can do to support the residents of Londonderry and the state, we are ready to do so. And we will be looking forward to bills coming forward, perhaps over the summer, that might help and facilitate some of the ideas that were discussed here today. So my point here is that we are ready to help out our citizenry here. And we're open to ideas, and we're ready to support whatever actions are reasonable to take. I'd like to invite Representative Dolan to say a few words on our meeting we had last week.
Thank you, Doug, and appreciate you setting that meeting up. Although, as a state representative, I attended the meeting with my Town Council hat on and found some very interesting things out that may be of interest to you. Many of you are living with bottled water that is either coming to you from St. Cobain during the early testing that went on, and some of you are buying it yourself. And we all recognize that that's a very temporary and rather inconvenient way to live your lives. The best way to move forward is eventually some type of filtration system that filters these bad chemicals out of your drinking water, so you don't end up consuming them. Now, you probably, if you've been following this a while, you know that the council has has made it known that we are taking legal action against the polluter. But those of you who understand legal action, that can take a very long time. And months, maybe even years. So we went to the meeting with DES to try to explore some ideas of what can we do in the near term to help our residents, understanding, and you heard that a lot of the work that's being done is for water systems. Individual wells are really individual responsibility, which is not good news if you're thinking about putting in some type of a mitigation system or a filter system. So we tried to get creative, and we came up with an idea that I'm going to put on the table for the council to think about, whether or not we want to explore this. But perhaps, working with DES, having Londonderry become a pilot community for a first-in-the-state attempt at this, where the town would put up some money for filter systems, for individuals who threw some type of a water test that hopefully would be approved by the state, that the results of those tests indicate you're over the limits that had originally come out last fall. That you bring those results to the town, and the town would help you pay for a mitigation filtration system in your home, where the state, if they can get approval, now they don't have approval yet, but they have some money, that they get approval to use some of that money for this. That they would issue matching funds. So for, let me give you an example. So let's say that we decided that we would do $2,000, where the town would front $1,000, get $1,000 matching amount from the state, $2,000 to the resident. Now, DES will tell you, I think, I remember there are, right now, about three different technologies of filter systems that you can use. One is a point-of-use, like a separate faucet that comes off your sink that you would be able to use for drinking water or for cooking and so forth. Another is a whole-house system. And these different, these systems cost different amounts of money. The point-of-use system is a reverse osmosis system that probably around $500 or $600 at the top end. And these other systems go up to $1,500, $2,000, and even higher. So if we put, if we offer $2,000 to people who had bad wells, a filter system, or up to $2,000, that would certainly help our residents pay for this. Again, the Town Council would have to agree to that. We'd have to go into our UFBA, the balance, what we often call our rainy day fund. This is money that's to be left there for emergencies, and I can't think of a better emergency than providing clean drinking water to our residents. So we put a certain amount of that money aside, we fenced that off and say, "We're going to use it for that." The state, in the meantime, goes off and tries to get approval to use some of the money they have for matching funds. And then in the meantime, we continue our legal action to try to get all that money back eventually from the polluters to reimburse the town, so that we can put that back into our rainy day fund. But the system, we'd have to, so what we're going to do tonight, I'm going to ask the chairman if he would survey the council, is would we enter into an exploratory program to work with the state to come up with a program that would do kind of what I just mentioned? And you might say, "Well, gee, wait a minute, I already put a filter system in my house, what about me?" Well, I think we could come up with a program that would include those who are already partway down the road and taking care of their well. But the system would work something like this. If you had a concern, if you're to the west of High Range Road, for example, you might go out and test your well water. Now, the state and the town would work together and come up with what the standards ought to be that you're looking for, and also probably some suppliers that could provide you that testing. And, you know, we can use our, the volume of the business that they'd be getting and maybe help negotiate the price of that testing down. So as a homeowner, you go out and you do your own testing, and you'd pay for that. But then if you came back and said, "I've got results that don't meet the minimum standards," then we talk about a mitigation system or a filtration system. We put that in. And then, as I understand, it's a good idea for the state to come back after the fact and do another water test to make sure that the things that you thought were being filtered out were actually being filtered out. So now you've got clean water that's safe, and you have nothing to worry about. So if we do that, I'm thinking that, it's the back of the napkin tabulation, we're probably talking somewhere in the $300,000 to $400,000 range of our unexpended fund balance, which wouldn't kill us. We would have to go to Superior Court to get a judge to authorize us to use it for that purpose. But, you know, again, there is precedent for that, for using it for emergencies like this. And in the meantime, the state has to go and get money that's typically used for water systems to get it to be used for individual wells, which it's not currently authorized to do. So they go off and get that, we go off in the town side, collect the money. And in the meantime, we work on what the program is, who would be eligible, what the standards would be. Would we go back to the last September standards that we all came to know about for a while? Not the 70 parts per trillion that's currently in the court. And then we come back. If we had a program that sounded okay to the state and sounded okay to the town, we'd approve it. And then we could begin churning through it, really helping our residents get assurance that they're going to get clean water and they're not going to have to have bottled water forever. So, Mr. Chairman, that's what I'd like to put on the table.
So in full disclosure, in speaking with our legal counsel, our legal counsel has advised that this is a program that we can go ahead and we can look at. He would also help us work with the state, understanding that this is a process. So what happened is if we moved into our undesignated fund balance and go to Superior Court, we're not sure whether the judge could order, put an order down, or we'd have to go to special election. But what we don't want to do is wait till next March to deal with this, so we're going to deal with it now, is at least my point of view. So what I would like to ask the counsel is for consensus, to go to our attorney and start this process, and not do it through, you know, 10 or 15 meetings. Let's see if we can get something done in a much more expedited fashion.
Let's do it.
Yep, agree.
I fully support Dolan's motion.
Good, all right, then we have a consensus, we'll move forward with that piece. So that's what we're going to do. You all set, sir?
I just want to end that I will help in work with DES on any residual bills that need to be, that need to happen to facilitate whatever town action needs to happen, and we'll work on that for the next session.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are in All right, ladies and gentlemen, we are in public comment, so, and Bob, you're doing that great. The best way, I just got Bob first, the best way to do this is not for people to have to line up. Raise your hand. I'll point to you. Come on up. Bob, you had your hand up first. Come on up, give me your name and your address. And if I don't know your name, I apologize, I'll just point at you.
I'm Barb Ramsey, 26 Elwood Road in Londonderry. I've been tested for cancer since 1985 because they found polyps in 1985, and six years ago they told me because of my age I didn't really need to be tested anymore, but they took a blood test, and I ended up having a colonoscopy. Backing up a little bit, my son had cancer six years ago. I ended up with colon cancer five years ago, and after a history of not having any, this kind of surprised me, but now I'm kind of wondering if there's any kind of connection there. What bothers me right now is with the test, with the changing of these limits that you have on this, my question is, if we test it now, is the stuff moving because of the flow, or is it moving strictly because of the change of the levels?
Jeff?
Because, and let me finish.
Okay.
So, if I test it today and I come out with like a four or a five, how often do I have to test going forward to find out if it's moving? Or is the movement only really being caused because you're changing the standards?
Thanks for the question. So, the map that I showed, or the two maps side by side, are the same samples, so individual samples from individual wells at the same time. They're just color-coded differently to reflect whether or not they're above 70 or above 12. They don't capture changes through time. There's only a handful of wells in the St. Cobain area that have been sampled through time. Some have gone up, some have gone down, so I don't have a good sense from a time series perspective of how PFAS is changing in Londonderry through time.
So, no one has an idea of how long, once you test, that you've got a good result, how much you have to test, how soon you have to test again to see if the results changed?
Yeah.
Are they going to get standards set up for that?
You sort of asked two parts. One is, the standards don't affect the measurement you get. The technology for testing is now quite accurate.
I understand that.
Well, when we first started all of this, the testing, to get down to five parts per trillion, some labs could do it, some labs couldn't, and some labs who claimed they could, couldn't. Now, we get very reliable testing, and the ones who are on the site that Jeff showed, they're very reliable, and the best time series, if you just for yourself want to go look at an example, you can take a look, Penachuk and MVD, Merrimack Village District have been doing time series sampling of their wells over a long time period now, multiple years. And so, you can see that the wells that are stable are really stable, even though they're in an area where we've had droughts and not. What we do find is there are some areas where the contaminant is moving into the area, and obviously then your well is going to move by that. In this area, it depends on what your site is, but the sites here are generally by now in the ground. The amount of PFAS, especially PFOA and PFOS, that St. Cobain is putting out in the air is pretty low, and we're putting a requirement for filtration on that. Once it's in the ground, in New Hampshire at least, we don't find it moving very rapidly. And so, you've got, you know, and Jeff's got the map over there, if you're next to one of the Superfund sites, that started in the ground, it's been in the ground for a long time, it's not moving very fast at all. If you're in an area where there was a recent spill, for instance, there was a gasoline truck that overturned here in town. Now, there, the police called us the second that they fired the A-triple-F, and we stopped it, but in other cases where that was before everybody knew to do that, you're putting a large amount in the ground, and that's going to move for a little bit. Most of the sites here are probably not moving much, but if you're at five parts per trillion, going to six parts per trillion is a 20% increase, and the labs aren't that exact.
So, if I test today and I pass, what's the state say I should test again? I don't have to test again for this, or should I test it in five years or six years? Or is there any standard?
There's not at this point. What I'd actually recommend is that you test for the other stuff Jeff had up. While PFAS is a grave concern for everybody, some of the other stuff that's listed up there, for instance arsenic, and the reason we wanted to highlight that, we were here for the earlier meeting, 38% of the houses are over an arsenic standard that we know is not as restrictive as it should be, it's a technology limit, and nobody was concerned about arsenic. Arsenic, absolutely, I can tell you what it does to you.
We tested our house three times in the last seven years, and we didn't test for PFAS because we didn't know about it, so I'm going, but we had no problems with the other thing. So, if I'm specifically worried about PFAS, how often should I just have it done every time I do the regular test?
One thing I might add, in terms of timing of sampling, is often for contaminated sites, we try and test for what we call seasonality, so we'll test in the spring and then again in the fall. In the spring is kind of when you have a lot of the snow melting and water's going into the ground before the plants green up and pull water out of the shallow soils. And then again in the fall, when typically the plants have been sucking up all the water, and there's limited, what we call recharge, making it down into the aquifer. So, by testing twice a year, you get that seasonality.
So, I should pull out of my old age fund about $1,200 a year for testing?
I think the suggestion, if you're at five parts per trillion, do as Jeff said. If you test in the spring, test in the fall. If you test in the fall, test in the spring. If it also shows you're down to five parts per trillion, I think you're good for a while.
Okay. That's, and again, I'll make this short, I worry about the senior community and the amount of money that we could be spending on testing for the unknown.
I completely agree with you.
So, the last thing, and I don't expect an answer, is this going to affect any of our property taxes if we have areas that are above the limit?
No.
So, they will continue to go up?
That will be, well, that was very funny, but that will be up to you next Tuesday. And by the way, next Tuesday, you're voting on $120 million. 80 million on the school side, 37 million including sewer on the town side. Vote!
He and I did not rehearse that.
Five minutes, Ray.
Ray, President 3, Gary Drive. I'm going to make this brief because we've got a lot of people here that are concerned, okay?
Perfect.
Okay. Let's make one thing clear. We hear about the federal government sets the standard, okay? The state has tried to do the right thing by resetting the standard, then the chemical companies goes and sues the state and says, "No, you've got to put it back up." That's a problem. We have a senator here from Rye who has stepped up and said, "We need to go back to the judge, and we need to put it back where it belongs." So, I'm going to read something here, "The Public Trust versus Reparion Rights." Man, I should put my glasses on so I can see. Hold on. I'll try to make this brief. "The state's role as the trustee of all waters within the border, and that these waters shall be managed and conserved for the maximum public benefit." That is the public trust doctrine. I hear about, you know, this is not a homeroom state. All well and good, okay? But the federal government, and the state, and the town have the responsibility to protect its citizens, okay? Now, how do you do that? That's a whole left in question, but this is not something new, okay? Maybe we became aware of this in 2016. This has been out there for a long time. The EPA's been aware of it for a lot longer than that, okay? And the other thing is, we're talking about St. Cobain's as being the primary contributor to this contamination, and they are, but we're getting contamination from other sources. We've got two Superfund sites in town. This stuff, correct me if I'm wrong, is also leaching out from at least the Tinkham Superfund site, PFOAs and PFOSs. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Is that a question?
I think it's a question, yes. I don't know if I can direct it to him or not.
We've got to keep them going this way, so I give these guys an opportunity to answer.
Yes.
Gentlemen, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, you're correct. PFAS has been found at the Tinkham Superfund site.
And off Tinkham Superfund.
And also answer, there is another facility that does work very similar to St. Cobain. They're actually in Londonderry. Company's called TCI. They're much smaller, and they do have treatment on their stacks, but so far they've refused to allow us to do air testing on their stacks, so we don't know how effective the treatment is.
What do you mean? They won't allow?
We've required it, we've put an administrative order, they've taken us to court.
Okay, all right, all right, all right. But here's the thing, we're talking about PFOAs and PFOSs. That's the primary concern, that's what we're talking about here. There are other contaminants, like arsenic, also of concern. We're talking about the protection of fresh water, okay? And it's all encompassing. We have multiple impacts here in the town of Londonderry. We have a 625-acre new town being built. We have exit 4A, big mistake, my opinion, but anyway, and we have 93. We have blasting on 93. What do you think that does to rock? It releases arsenic. Who is doing the testing in Beaver Brook? Wait a minute, on the Superfund site, we've got all kinds of monitoring wells. If we read the report from the US EPA, it says, "We went down there and did a five-year study, and guess what? A lot of those wells are supposed to be locked, but the caps aren't on them." Who is watching them? Who is taking those samples, and where are the samples? I want to know, and I think these people should know too, okay? I've said enough. You know, if I go on here, it could take a long time, but there are other people that need to speak.
And you're welcome to come back after everyone else speaks, Ray.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I acted angry.
That's quite all right. I don't think anybody's happy about this. Thank you, Ray.
By the way, do I need to do this? I've sent questions to you folks. Have I gotten a response? Nothing.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm doing this as I'm seeing the hands, okay? I saw this lady with the hat right here, I'm sorry. Gentleman in the back, and then there's Ann right there.
Hi, I'm Monique Minicucci. I live at 138 Winterwood Drive in Century Village. I just had a quick question about the treatment technology. What's the difference between the treatment technology currently being performed for PFOA and PFOS?
Gentlemen?
What is it? Like, did I have a follow-up question on that?
Yeah, so typically the same treatment works for PFOA and PFOS. So, examples include reverse osmosis, where you're trying to push water through a filter, and the molecules are stopped on the one side of the filter, and clean water shows up on the other side.
I apologize. I meant, what is the technology behind the testing, the sampling? Because those are too standardized, right? PFAS is not.
Right. Currently, there's two acknowledged testing methodologies. One is the EPA 537 method, which is currently at 537V1.1.
Okay, so in English, it's like you take the water out, you dip a stick in it, like how does that work?
Oh, no. These are not compounds that you want to necessarily go test for yourself. The state lab has a sort of background test for other things that you can go do. This, you want to hire a professional. We're talking parts per trillion, and this stuff is everywhere. As an example, unfortunately, here's a sticky note that says PFAS, absolutely. So, if I'm rubbing this, or I stick it on the bottle, it will contaminate it. So, the sampling itself, a professional does, they have to actually wash their clothes certain ways, they have to make sure of what they carry with them, no waterproof paper, no markers. So, professionals do the testing. There's two different tests. The EPA has one, the Department of Defense came up with another, the Department of Defense has done a lot of contaminating, so they've gotten a lot of technical.
For PFOS and?
PFOA. For the standpoint of testing and collection, they're the same compound, just think them the same way.
What's the difference in the testing that you conduct for those two standardized, you know, but not for PFAS? What's the difference?
PFAS is the whole family. PFOA and PFOS are two individual compounds in that family. Testing is exactly the same for them, the technology to collect, the technology to test, and the technology to report are exactly the same.
Okay, so it would just be a matter of the tester just adding another sample?
Nope, they're all in the same sample. The EPA 537V1.1 does 18 of the 4,000 compounds. Isotope dilution, depending on which lab you go to, does around 30 of them.
So, they can't all three be done at the same time?
They're all done at the same time.
Okay. Oh, okay, gotcha. And I have a question about, because like for kids, and, you know, I have children and stuff, and waiting on a test, waiting on a bill to be passed, waiting on, you know, putting your trust into that, meanwhile developing a tumor or whatever, getting a test through your doctor, blood tests for PFAS, and, you know, if you have high levels of it, do you get precedence over the funding for that specific area? Because I think I heard earlier that it's only for private homeowners. I live in a townhouse community, and I've paid to have my water extracted, and I have PFOAs, failed the state's regulation or whatever it is, it's a blue X in my unit. So, if I was to go to the doctor and take my kids there and have them specifically test for these chemicals, what kind of support does the town give you in that circumstance?
I can't speak for the town, but I could answer for the state if you'd like.
Because we have a community bedrock well.
Please answer for the state, because it's way too complicated a question.
Sorry.
We just don't know.
Multiple pieces inside of there. As far as blood testing itself, if you go to the Department of Health and Human Services, DHHS, they have a page that talks about health impacts. It does have an information sheet if you want to have blood testing done. This is not a standard test that your standard doctor would know how to order, and your standard blood lab can't take it. So, there's an information sheet, you could sit with your health professional. There's also a sheet to take to your health professional that will help you shape that conversation. You can then get a blood test when the test comes back. Unfortunately, there's no, and I'm not a doctor, there's no level at which they say, "Okay, above this level, we have this health concern," because there's just not that knowledge out there right now. So, what you can get is your comparison to the backgrounds in the United States. Assuming you do have testing in your condo or your community, that is the one pot of money that I can speak to, because we do have it, and that is the focus of small water systems that I spoke about before. Right now, nobody is in excess to our state standard, unfortunately. Well, I don't even know how to say that. When the new standards come into place, assuming where the health-based standards are, and your condo association is over that, then what we'd be able to help is with the testing. We can help, because they'll have to have multiple wells, so we can test which ones are higher, which one's lower. We can then pay for the design effort, which is 26% of the cost, and then we could pay for the confirmation testing on the back end. That's what the legislature authorized us to do. That money I have in-house, and I've done the studies, and we actually have spoken to the small water system operators, so they know how to go tap into that money.
Oh, all right, because I have a report here that says it fails the state guideline, the PFOA, where I live.
And?
What's the actual number of it?
The number is 27.2.
Yeah, and on the day that was reported, that might have been accurate, but as of today, I actually don't have a drinking water standard in the state, so you can't be in violation of it.
PFOA?
I don't have a drinking water standard as of today.
Oh, okay.
It's over 70, you're all right, yeah.
No, it's not a drinking water standard.
The result is 27.2.
There is no federal standard.
So, we'll keep the questions up here in the middle, so are you all set?
Okay, I think I'm good, yeah.
Sir in the back. Okay, so I've got gentleman in the back, and Ann over here, I've got this nice lady here in the front, and I've got that gentleman over there, and then I'll come to you. Let me keep track, okay?
Charlie Sullivan, 14 Justin Circle. So, I had two questions. One is, everything west of High Range, Jeff, I think you said was under a consent decree with St. Cobain?
Go ahead.
And so, I wanted to know a little bit more what the consent decree is and what they have agreed to do for those wells that are west of High Range, just to find out a little bit about that. And you just mentioned reverse osmosis. Is there a filter standard that should be set if we're looking to do something like that? As far as, you know, five parts per million or something that will be filtered out? So, and then, the second question was, someone asked something about the tax rate, and we just did a town-wide reassessment. I'm on the west side of High Range Road. We're under the consent decree, which I just found out tonight, and my tax rate went up 20%. I don't think the value of my house went up 20% while I'm sitting in a affected area under a consent decree for water pollution. So, I think there should be something looked at as to how that was done, and when we did the town-wide reassessment, where they made aware of those wells, those areas...
those areas that were experiencing that type of water pollution? Because there's, there's no way I went up 20% when I'm sitting in an area that has already been designated under a consent decree for water pollution. So that, I'd like you guys to, but first, the consent decree from Jeff, and I'll sit back and listen.
Thanks, Charlie, for the, the question. That's, that's actually a really important question. There's a lot that I could talk about, and I didn't really go into much detail about the consent decree. But essentially, the consent decree requires St. Cobain to address PFAS contamination that exceeds state standards inside the area encompassed by the consent decree. So that's inside this blue shaded area, the area west of High Range Road. And what that means is, St. Cobain is responsible for implementing an investigation of wells that exceed that standard. So last year, for the period of time when the standard of 12 for PFOA was in effect, St. Cobain designed and began to implement a sampling program. And as part of that sampling program, they issued a work plan, which included an initial list of properties. And then it was based on an iterative, sort of risk-based approach. So if somebody's well tested above 12, the neighbors were identified as properties for the next round of sampling. So St. Cobain issued what we call three addendums. So they had the work plan and then three addendums. There was a bit of a delay in sending out letters to homeowners, because it has to go through attorney review due to some of the legal situations surrounding St. Cobain. And after that 30-day period of legal review, they'd send out the letters. So letters were sent to property owners who were identified in the work plan and Addendum 1. And before the letters went out to homeowners on Addendums 2 and 3, that's when the Superior Court Judge blocked enforcement of the low standard. So basically, what St. Cobain has done to date, they've sampled approximately, or approximately 66 properties in Londonderry are receiving bottled water from St. Cobain. So St. Cobain is voluntarily providing bottled water to residents whose wells are located in the consent decree and exceed 12 parts per trillion. St. Cobain identified through the work plan and the three addendums, 223 properties for sampling in the town of Londonderry. 102 of those were not contacted. So those were in, listed in Addendums 2 and 3, so they were identified, and they were about to send letters, and then the judge blocked the order, or blocked enforcement of the 12 parts per trillion. And St. Cobain sampled actually 59 of the properties. Of those, 36 were offered bottled water. So people got into the bottled water program that St. Cobain is implementing, kind of a, three ways. One, they may have previously been sampled as part of the 2016 site investigation, and they were below 70, but their results were on file with DES. Two, St. Cobain sampled their well as part of the sampling program. Or three, homeowners sampled their own well, determined that they were above 12 parts per trillion, and submitted the results to St. Cobain. So to date, St. Cobain is continuing to provide bottled water to residents who test their own wells. Now, if, if we were continuing with this investigation, more properties would be sampled, and ultimately, St. Cobain would be responsible for providing not only bottled water, but a long-term solution for residents whose water tests above 12 parts per trillion within the blue consent decree area. And long-term solution from the state's standpoint would be installation of a whole-house treatment system that typically consists of granular activated carbon, kind of the second technology that we talked about, or haven't talked about, but second treatment technology. Or potentially, extension of water lines. And the investigation didn't get to the point where St. Cobain was ready to decide how they were going to proceed, you know, additional wells had to be sampled.
Jeff, one thing that you guys said in October was, is that when they drew, and I'm, please tell me if I'm saying this incorrectly, they drew the line at High Range Road, that is not a scientific line, that is a legal line.
That's correct. It's, the Attorney General negotiated with St. Cobain's lawyers for a number of things as to what we tried to get in the consent decree. One thing that's very important to stay in the consent decree, it in no way limits the town from any action, and it doesn't limit any individual, homeowners' association, or anybody else from any action. All this said is that we require an investigation, and we require a long-term solution if anybody's over the standards inside of this boundary, and they agreed if it's inside this boundary, that's their responsibility. So that's what the consent decree says. It does not limit if we were to find somebody in excess of the previous state standard outside that boundary, or for one of the other compounds we're starting to regulate, it can go outside of it. But to get the consent decree in place, there were negotiations between the AG and their lawyers, and the agreement was that if it exceeded the state's standards inside that boundary, or the old state standards anywhere, then they would have a responsibility.
So you folks know, when the judge stayed the order, we had already started our process of going, of joining in the action and going after St. Cobain. But the judge stayed the order, so we, we're kind of stuck.
So while, while the chairman was out of the room, there was a question that was asked of the council, so I'll take that up before I pass it out back over to the chairman. It was about assessment. So we did not take the decree into consideration, so really, at that point, the assessments were sent out. But there is an abatement process, and I think that's also something that you could look at. Abatement process could be, could be filled out, and as we know more about it, that will be taken into consideration. So hopefully, that answers that question.
So for example, the number changed October 1st, we sent bills November 1st. I don't know where it would go, but the only way to, to, is to, is to bring an abatement forward, if, if that's what you feel you want to do and make that argument, and I, I don't know how that would turn out. I mean, I hope it would turn out well for you, because I live near you.
Just one follow-up, John? The, on the abatement part of it?
Sure, come on up. I'm sorry, you know, people, people have said they're watching, so.
Just on the abatement part of it, that would fall back on every homeowner to go get three or four, I think it's three, appraisals that would counter what the town says. This is kind of a town-wide thing, and if it was a well that was contaminated above 12 parts per million, 70 parts per million, I would think that would be the process to go forward on something like that.
Honestly, Charlie, I don't know. I mean, I mean.
I know, John, I'm just.
Here, here's the problem with the whole abatement process is, and, and we, you know, and we can get into taxes another time, and equalization rates, everything else.
Oh, no, I was just venting on that. So I'm fine with, I'm fine with your answer for tonight.
But here, here's the overall problem with all taxes. Takes $120 million to run this place. Somebody's going to pay. I wish it was St. Cobain.
Yep.
You know, but.
John, I'm just voicing the fact that I found out I'm in the blue area, which I didn't know about.
Yeah, I get it.
And last fall's bill came in, and I'm like, well, wait a minute. The two don't equate, so.
Hey, listen, I wasn't overly happy with it either.
And then, one follow-up for you, Jeff. We had talked earlier on the phone today, and you had mentioned the primary reason you had set the 12 parts per trillion had to do with infancy, or infants with breast milk. And I know there's a lot of young families in town that, I'm not sure if you're comfortable saying it tonight, but why 12 parts per trillion were, was the bottom line on that.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I'll, I'll answer it. So as I said, the legislature authorized to go do this work, and they actually let us hire a toxicologist and a health risk assessor. It ends up, and I'm not a toxicologist by training, there is a rather standard process to go and set a risk, health risk-based standard, where all you do is say, "I'm only going to worry about health protection." The legislature also very specifically asked us to look at prenatal and early developmental stages and make sure those were given special emphasis. So we went through the standard toxicological process. You can sort of pick some quality standards. We insisted that it be very high-quality studies, that there be direct human pathways that match the animal studies. The last piece which was new is Minnesota, which is where 3M is, Minnesota Manufacturing. They settled with Minnesota and gave them $850 million. Part of where Minnesota spent the money was to go out and model, and then, unfortunately, ground truth with real blood samples, the impacts to pregnant and nursing mothers, and in utero, and breastfeeding and formula-feeding children. Their model came out and was published in early January of last year for PFOA, and then was followed by another model publication for PFOS. And then they completed their work with PFNA, and we actually used our toxicologist and an external toxicologist from University of Florida to review for PFHXS and publish that in a peer-reviewed journal. Yes, the, the children are meant to absorb proteins from their mother, whether it's through the placenta or through breast milk, and these things bind to proteins. And mothers are built to develop and deliver proteins to children. It's what we are built to do. And so, the, the concern is, in the early stages, both if it's formula, which has a lot of protein, if it's mixed with contaminated water, or if a mother is breastfeeding and she is drinking contaminated water, you can accelerate the rate that the child gets it. We took that into full account. And so, to anybody out there who has somebody, a neighbor, a friend, that is breastfeeding or is coming up on that stage, breastfeeding is extremely valuable for the child and the mother. A lot of studies are starting to come out that breastfeeding is just as beneficial for the mother as it is for the child. And we know in great certainty the value of breastfeeding. So do not want somebody to get scared off and not, you know, consider breastfeeding. If you're concerned, talk to your doctor. They're better trained than I am. But the standards were set so that even in the worst-case scenario, where a mother is drinking a ton of water, and the baby is extremely thirsty, these standards protect. That's why they are this low. And again, the legislature told us, "Take this into account and really look at this stage of life." It ends up, for what we currently know, that is one of the pathways we worry about, and these standards were set to make sure we protect for that also. The other issue is for a child, once it gets in their body, it stays in, and they're in that developmental stage. So we really want to make sure they stay below a limit of any concern, so that while it comes out of their body, they're always below that standard. And we do the standard by the actual blood serum that the child would have.
All right, thank you.
Anne?
And again, if you go to the frequently asked questions, the breastfeeding one comes up again. I really, really, really want to strongly reiterate, we, we do think breastfeeding is a very good answer, but if you've got concerns, please talk to your doctor.
Anne, Anne, just one second before you go. Charlie, just to finish addressing something you asked about the abatements, and I'm going to be as nice as possible too, because I know your daughter's watching, and I don't need her mad at me. But just so everyone.
No, but she'll text me.
So everyone's aware, the abatement process for your 2019 taxes, that deadline passed already, okay? But I just want you to know, and we spoke to the town attorney about this as well, because this isn't the first time that question came up. It's highly unlikely that even if you had filed an abatement for your 2019 taxes, which were set on April 1st of last year, remember, this didn't come out until the fall, that you would have received an abatement for your 2019 taxes. Now, going forward, what we'll be looking at is monitoring the market values in this particular area versus what the rest of the town is doing. And if it's warranted for your 2020 taxes, you may be eligible. I say "may." But it's something that we can look at, you know, you'll be able to apply for an abatement on your 2020 taxes when you get that tax bill this December, up until March 1st of 2021. But I don't want anyone to walk out of here thinking they can apply for an abatement tomorrow on your 2019 taxes. But at the same time, know that it would have been highly unlikely that an abatement would have been, you would have been eligible anyway, just because of the timing of all of this.
But you would take this going forward?
Well, Charlie, we'll definitely look at it. Yep.
Check's in the mail.
Abatement's in the mail.
Okay, Anne.
28 Wedgewood Drive. Kevin, you just mentioned abatements. Now, are you talking just for PFOAs, PFOSs, or arsenic and anything else in the water?
I think, I think going down the abatement path is, is really something we can't cover tonight. We, we, we don't know the answer.
Right, I know, so.
We would have to consult legal counsel, and as stated earlier, it takes $120 million to run this place, so.
I know, that's why I was.
Yeah, we, we don't know the answer.
Open up on a can of arms.
This is more about St. Cobain, DES, and PFOAs.
Right. You mentioned breastfeeding. I, I lived for 10 years within 5,000 feet of the St. Cobain plant while I was breastfeeding both my children, and I'm concerned. But I want to know, we talk about the PFOAs accumulating in the system. Are they dangerous in your system? How do they affect you and wipe up cancer or whatever might come of that? I ask that because my dad died of mesothelioma. We know that's due to asbestos exposure, and we talk about it accumulating, the PFOAs and PFOSs. What does it do to you? Does it harm you? What did, I want to, you know?
Gentlemen?
What have you?
Gentlemen?
Found in the past?
Only what's documented.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I mean, if there's documentation that someone can go out and research and read, great.
Because we mentioned we had cancer. Well, I have cancer, you have cancer, many people do, and many people die of it. But I want to know specifically what we're looking at.
I get it, but I want to make sure that everyone can tie and, to it somewhere.
Right, that's what I want.
So if you go to our website, the toxicologists publish a report that goes compound by compound, what is the health condition that is most sensitive? How does that get translated to a human being? What blood serum level would, would start that concern? None of those endpoints, and that's what they call it, are cancer. So these are protective for the most sensitive, the first thing that would crop up. Cancer would be a later thing that would crop up at higher and higher levels of the contaminant. So in these two compounds, PFOA and PFOS, PFOA is liver. They see liver impacts. In the case of PFOS, it's immunological. Sort of think that if, if you and I both get a flu vaccine, you have PFAS and I don't, or switch it, I have PFAS and you don't, I will not respond to the vaccine as strongly as you will. So you will have greater protection from the vaccine than I will. Your natural immunological response will be stronger than mine, because I've been exposed to PFOS. If you are wanting to take a look for linkages, which are not specific endpoint, but are indicative for populations that have been highly contaminated, there's a study called the C8 Study, and that's the largest epidemiological study. That's where they actually looked at dosing in human beings and outcomes, health outcomes, in that population. It's where DuPont manufactured these materials. There, because of a court settlement, they were able to fund huge human studies. We have not done any human studies here. There's some limited blood testing that was done in the state. There is now an effort with ATSDR, which is part of the CDC, to do a study at Peas Air Force Base, in particular because of the daycare that was there, or daycares. In our case, they were animal studies. The endpoints for the two compounds that show up here were liver impacts or immunological impacts. But if you want to look at the broader array of things that have shown any linkages, which are not causality, but if you see a population has a high contaminant rate, these show up a little bit more often. The C8 Study is probably the best study to get that broader picture.
Now, how does it travel through the body?
It generally binds proteins, the PFOA and PFOS. Again, if you go to the 4,000, there, there are other things that happen. But for those two compounds, they tend to bind to proteins, and they stay in the proteins in your blood. And they, as I said, they're not, we normally think of a toxin, we think of something that immediately has this huge impact. Most things, like arsenic and others that are more toxic in that way, pass through your body fairly quickly. Here, an individual molecule does not have that immediate reaction, but it's got years to go do it. So it doesn't have to be terribly good at its job, it's got a long time to do its job. And so it's sort of that multiplication of, of how toxic it is instantaneously by how long it sits in the body. In this case, these are not instantaneously terribly toxic. We all are carrying them around in our bodies, even if we aren't drinking water in the St. Cobain study area, but they then stay in your body for a very long time. And as I said, these are in a lot of different things. There's a lot of different exposure pathways. The one that is really concerning is that you're ingesting water, because you drink a lot of water every day, and it can build up. I hope I answered your question.
Well, not quite, but I know where to look from.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I've got the gentleman in the back.
The court's much better than mine.
And then I'm going to come to this little lady here, and then right behind you, and then I'll just move right down the wall. Sir, you had your hand up a while ago, right? No? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's good that you guys are keeping me straight. This gentleman did have his hand up before you. So it's this gentleman, this nice lady here in the front, then to you, then to the lady behind you. I'm doing the best I can, folks.
My name's Eric Coliforth at 9 Kelly Road in Londonderry, and I just had a question about, you were talking about potentially programs for homeowners. about, you were talking about potentially programs for homeowners. One thing government has shown us that it's good at is responding too soon, often too late, and I worry that if we're going to go that route, that's multiple points of failure by everyone getting their own system. Why not, would the, just the municipal water, wouldn't that be a better solution that would at least address it? Because then you guys could control it and test for it.
So here's, so I've brought up municipal water earlier in the-
Yep.
Right? These guys can correct whatever it is I say. The problem is that the municipal water system is not properly filtered and regulated, you're still going to receive the PFOAs.
Right.
So, and what people are telling me is, and I'm not a scientist, what people are telling me is, is that the number needs to be zero. So I don't know if that's the right answer. In order to be able to put in what I said at the beginning, we would have to take it to the ballot. 51% of the people would have to approve it, and it would take us, I'm going to guess somewhere between three and five years to implement it, if it was all approved. Is that about right, just saying, yes?
John, 67%.
Oh, it'd have to be 2/3, excuse me, it'd have to be 2/3, so 67%. I would-
60%.
60. I would hope that we'd be able to get enough of people excited about it to do it, right? But I have, the town engineer and public works director is in the room, and when I said the three to five years, he told me that's about right. So the answer to your question is, is if I can get money for $5,000 and fix your problem in your home today, and 9,000 dwellings in this town, and I can do that in less than three to five years, I'm doing a good thing. And I don't know if that made any sense, but that's sort of what-
I'm just thinking kind of long-term though.
It's kind of like this, we're trying to figure it out, you know what I mean?
Right, but like, so if you're talking everyone does this, then you're talking filters every year, and then you're talking disposal of those filters, which then is another environmental impact on the disposal of those filters.
Totally agree.
So we, what's the right balance, I guess, it just would be nice to have that conversation moving forward, is do we balance the short-term solution, which we want for our health, versus the long-term impact for those of us that are going to be here for 30, 40 more years?
Please join us in more meetings, because that's what we're trying to figure out.
And I think the chairman did say earlier too, that, you know, this is not just this day of a meeting, it's probably going to be some charats, it's probably going to be some long conversations about how to do it the right way, and we need your feedback on it for sure.
But we want to do this with some sort of sense of urgency.
Oh, absolutely. I'm all for filters. And a technical question about filters. We have a one-micron carbon hybrid block for a whole-home filter. Is that going to be enough if we're?
What we've found so far with most block filters is they're set up for other things, they're not set up for this. Most that use granulated activated carbon are granulated, so it's powderized, pulverized. That gives you better bedtime, it gives you better contact time, and so it tends to be, we found. We did have one case where a responsible party did propose a block filter that had been tested for PFAS. Its results were promising, but you could do better by going with the more purpose-built design.
So the micron size isn't necessarily what's important here, is it specifically filtering out?
It's contact time. In particular with GAC, it's an ad adsorption process, so you need it to be in contact with granular carbon long enough, and it's about a 10-minute bedtime is what we ideally want to see. And most of those kind of filters are meant to actually pass water pretty fast.
Yeah, it's a fast thing. Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome. And just for clarification, folks, the numbers I've been throwing around for bonds does not include hooking up to your houses. That would have to be something else we'd have to work together on. Okay, so I'm moving around. Lady right here in front, thanks for helping me keep track, folks.
My name is Erica Lowey, I live at 18 Lancaster Drive. I usually don't have a problem asserting if I need to have a chance to speak, so thanks for being patient with me. Actually, I have kind of a two-part thing. The first is directed at Mr. Dolan's suggestion about being able to do a short-term mitigation, or doing, being able to fund or support mitigation for affected townspeople. We're part of the Apple Tree, the Orchard Tree Mall contamination, by the way. So that's been a little bit of a thing, because we just moved into town in June, and we bought our house, and then we found out about four or five months later that we had 200, our parts, our levels are in the 200 parts per trillion range, and our neighbors across the street have mid-500s. So for us, it's a big sense of urgency. My kids are three and five, they're right in the middle of this. So I love the idea of funding, or contributing to funding for individual home treatments as a short-term strategy. I would like to advocate as part of that, as we look at solutions, and particularly as we look at short-term mitigation. I know it's very tempting to go for like a point-of-use filter, just something on the kitchen sink, because it's fairly easy to use. My parents have one of those for arsenic in the well that was in the house that I grew up in. But especially for those of us with small kids, anyone who has a garden, people with pets, and particularly those of us who live in a riparian zone, right next to a stream, a pond, something like that, for me, I would love to see much more comprehensive short-term treatment. Instead of a point-of-use filter, I would like to advocate early in the process, even as you're just beginning deliberations on this, for point-of-entry systems, that that would be the standard that you would set, and particularly also that you would avoid something that is going to put contaminated water back into the aquifer, like a reverse osmosis system.
Understood.
Thank you, I'd really like that to go on there. And the other portion of this, you briefly mentioned it, but when I, when we first found out about the contamination, and I was speaking to Paul Rydel, he was mentioning the study going on with the Pease folks, and I wanted to ask if you could elaborate on that for the folks here, because, you know, I've heard other people saying, well, what does this level mean in my blood? And it sounds like that, to me, could be an opportunity, not only to contribute to a greater body of research about this, because we're kind of on the forefront of it, but also to shape the conversations with our doctors. If you'd be able to elaborate on how we could get involved in that study, if that would be possible.
Unless you were working on Pease Air Force Base, or you had a child in the daycare, you cannot.
Ah.
It is very, very much focused on Pease. The money, Senator Shaheen and Senator Hassan went to bad, particularly Senator Shaheen, who's got some representatives here. They were able to go get some funding. It's Department of Defense funding to evaluate Department of Defense facilities. You are not one. It also probably won't really be that informative to you, because the primary compounds there are PFOS, and unfortunately, in the children's blood, where there was some blood testing done, PFHXS. Here, we are not seeing PFOS or PFHXS.
Oh, we're PFOS.
Couple of landfills, I think we've had some PFOS hits, but PFHXS, if we've had any hits, they were below standards, even the new proposed standards that don't exist today.
Chairman, let me add also-
Yes. Turn the microphones around for those ladies.
The issue that the lady that just sat down brought up, I don't know if I can get her attention.
Hi, Ethan. I can't remember everybody's names, but I can remember Ethan's. Go ahead.
The issue about the reverse osmosis point-of-use system, that was, that's only one of three systems that we talked about with the state earlier this week, and the other two systems are whole-house systems, and perhaps you guys could elaborate on what those, the real difference is cost.
Correct.
The reverse osmosis system is probably less than $500, the others are in the thousands. So maybe the DES could elaborate on what the three systems we talked about.
Yeah, and I think there's a little bit of confusion. So there's three technologies that are known to be effective against PFOS and PFOA, again, the ones most commonly seen here. One is granulated activated carbon, that's one most commonly used. There's one, which is an ion exchange resin, that's sort of a newer technology, and then the last is reverse osmosis. You can then do either a point-of-use, which is at a location, or you can do a point-of-entry, which is a whole-house. Different people, for different locations and different setups, prefer one or the other. Ion exchange resin really isn't applicable at a house level yet. It's got a lot of promise, it looks really good, there's some nice advantages to it, but generally, you're looking at granulated activated carbon or reverse osmosis. Was mentioned is, reverse osmosis has some pluses in that it also takes other contaminants out, and so if you've got a lot of stuff going on, a point-of-use might be attractive to you personally, and for some people, they don't have room in their basement for a larger canister, and so it is one of those things. From the state's standpoint, if there's a responsible party, we do require point-of-entry. That is the standard for a responsible party. If we were setting up a rebate program, I think the idea was to be sensitive that some homeowners want certain things, and some owners don't want certain things. And if we can find a technology and an application that meets the homeowner's desires and is healthy and protective, maybe we can make that version affordable for that homeowner.
Thank you.
Again, if we can get all of the approvals, and I mean, there's a lot to go on in that.
Trust me, we're looking for somebody to sue. All right, so I'm going to say who I have right now. I have these two ladies right here, the three, I'll take the three ladies here, the gentleman there, then I'll go to Deb, then I'll come to the front. I'm going to start zeroing in on nine o'clock and do a check-in here, okay? So I'm going to let these ladies, these three ladies, speak right up here at these microphones. So just, I'm not saying we're leaving at nine, I'm just trying to zero in on timelines. So if the three ladies could use the microphone right here, that'd be great. And then who'd I say, sir, why don't you come on up here and wait for these three ladies to finish? So please proceed. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Lorraine Sheehan, and I have a few statements and a few questions. I do like Mr. Doyle's idea of a filtration system.
Dolan.
Dolan, sorry. I can't hear. Of a filtration system, I think that that would be a better way to go, where the Penachuk and Massabesic have recently tested high of toxins. But in saying that, in doing research, to put in either a carbon filter or to put in an all-natural filter, it's going to be like $35,000 to $4,000. It's a little bit more than you quoted, to do a whole-house, to do a whole-house system.
It's more like the number I said at the beginning, $2,000 to $5,000.
Yeah, that's a better number. Okay. And I just wanted to show you this. This was my dog Max, and after, he was only two, and after extensive testing at Angel Memorial, he died. He was healthy, there was nothing wrong with him. He died of autoimmune disease. And he was my explorer in the yard, and there is a stream up the back of my yard, which, so my house, it's two-fold, coming down from the stream, and, you know, retrievers like to explore. The other question I have is, when was the town aware that there was an issue with the PFASs? At what point did DES or the town figure this out?
If you'd like-
Could Kevin answer that for us, and then we'll go to you?
I was going to point, Kevin was town manager in Litchfield when the whatever hit the fan in Litchfield.
Okay, yep.
Correction, I was living in Litchfield. No, that's true, we'd already lost you.
Okay.
But he was still living there. We found out the beginning of March 2015, and your town leadership was in coordination, keeping track. At the early stages, in early 2015, we had absolutely no belief that there was any contamination making it to Londonderry. We honestly started out thinking it was a half-a-mile radius tops, and then we discovered more and more about the air emission, and we discovered that it was further and further out. But again, if you go by our previous state standards, there was no contamination in Londonderry, only when we changed the standards did some portions come in. So while we've been in coordination and communication, the first time a house was outside of standards would have been the first of October of last year.
Okay. Another question, maybe for the town board.
If I could, just one quick, you stated that there are contaminants in Lake Massabesic, and I'd like to be very clear, that is not accurate. I don't know where you got that information from. We have their test results, Massabesic is clean, Penachuk did have some elevated levels in one of their sources. However, they have brought another source online, and if you look at their latest consumer confidence reports for the last six, seven months in a row, all of them are well below even the proposed standards. But Lake Massabesic does not have contamination. I would be really clear, it's a primary source for a large part of the population of the state. It is highly monitored, and it has very, very low levels.
Low levels, yeah.
I don't think we said it had contamination. We said that there was, there are some websites out there that have numbers on them saying, and the numbers are extremely low.
That's why I wanted to say, I don't know where that information is.
Yeah, low, right.
They're well below 12.
Right.
They're very low.
Right, I think they were seven or eight.
Was it low or zero? He says none, you say low, there's a difference.
No, I didn't say none, I said it's very low.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the websites that are out there are, have some very low-level numbers.
There is no such thing as zero with these compounds. It's non-detect at best, and then we'll get a better test, and we'll detect.
Okay. Okay, since these toxins are not biodegradable, okay, our land, our air are polluted with them. It's going to take 100 years to break down. So homeowners really shouldn't plant, and it says on the health websites, do not water with the water, even if you did plant something. So it's quasi, if it would even be safe to have anything planted in your yard. So, I mean, it's ruined a lot of our properties up here, besides the fact that it's like camping every day, having to bring up bottles of water. I mean, it's no joke. They're being carried up to the second floor. I mean, you can't turn on your faucet. My appliances are taking a beating from whatever's, whatever toxins are in here. And so, if it can't be cleaned up, the land can't be cleaned up, and it's absorbed through your skin, and St. Obane is still allowed to operate, and they don't have in the proper scrubbers, then it's going to keep multiplying.
So let me, there are a couple of things in there. One, you said it's absorbed through the skin, that's not accurate. It is strictly from ingestion. If you put it in your mouth and swallow, that's the pathway. As far as the damages, we agree, that's why the state has sued on behalf of all entities in the state. As I said, the consent decree does not bind the town or anybody else. Separately, we have sued all of the manufacturers who created these materials and knew about this, and that we have sued on behalf of every entity in the state, to collect all damages, and then, should we win, figure out how to get that to the damaged parties.
Right.
As far as growing crops, what it really comes down to is you have to take a look at what water you specifically have. If your well on your property has very high levels-
Does.
You certainly don't want to grow crops with that water.
Right.
What we do find is if you are more mildly contaminated, most of the research shows that for these compounds, if whatever you're growing sets, call it a fruit, I know it's not accurate, I'm not, but, you know, a product that you snap off and eat, these compounds tend to get caught in the roots and the stem, and they don't make it out there. So I live in Litchfield, I have a garden, I grow tomatoes, I grow peppers, I grow things that clearly go out, and then they grow something I snap off and eat. And I make sure the water that I use to irrigate is low contamination. What that means is, don't grow green leafy vegetables, you know, lettuce. I've got a lot of neighbors who really like growing their own greens, and we recommend you don't do that. But I agree, there's been damages done, that's why we're suing on behalf of all parties to the manufacturers, because they're the ones who made these materials knowing that when they were used and used as directed, they were going to have these outcomes, and we think they should be held responsible. As was mentioned by your chairperson, that's going to be years away. And so, the chance to have that damage repaid to you in some way is not happening tomorrow.
Oh, no, I realize that, but lastly, and I'll go away. The, why does the government, okay, let these toxic places like Monsanto, like St. Obane, why do they let them operate when it's killing people? They still don't have the proper scrubbers, and why aren't they closed down until they do the proper thing? They're harming the environment, and the government's looking the other way and giving them permits to do it.
The federal law that allows chemicals into commercial use is set up, many people say it, and I agree, is set up backwards. Instead of having to prove a chemical is safe before you bring it into use, you get to bring it into use with a declaration you don't believe it's dangerous, and that's a big difference. As far as St. Obane, we were given authority under the bills I mentioned at the very beginning to finally actually measure air impacts and demand treatment, and we are following that law, and they are being held to the timelines of that law. They are, they have proposed, and now have a permit to build treatment, and they have to build it and have it in operation less than 12 months. That's what we're allowed to do under the law, those are the laws of the state. Other states don't even have that authority.
Okay, but when you ask the DES, okay, I asked them- Okay, but when you ask the DES, okay, I asked them in Merrimack this question, what chemicals are they burning there? The answer is, they look at you. Okay, well, do you know what chemicals they're burning there? And they say, yes, but they don't want the public to panic.
No, that's inaccurate. All of our test results are publicly available. If you're interested, on our website, there's a one-stop, it's a button, click on it, you can type in St. Cobain, and every test result, every inspection, every violation they've had is all listed there, and you can read it all. EPA's Office of Research and Development went out and did testing for us. All those results are published. There are a number of compounds that EPA found that don't have names. So to say we don't know everything is correct, 'cause they saw the numbers, but we don't know what they are. But as that, they're also not regulated. If they're not regulated at a federal level, then we have to write a new state law for every compound, and we, we have not done that as of yet.
Well, they were closed down in New York and Vermont, for good reasons.
Nope, they're still in operation in New York, they're still in operation in Vermont.
I heard they were closed down there.
In Huxford Falls, they're still there, there's a lot of remediation, they had to do everything.
Oh, okay.
But it's, um, so I'm, I'm gonna try to, I'm gonna try to move through a few with folks, if that's okay.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Marie, and 238 Wyndham Road. I have a question regarding bottled water. So if I'm purchasing bottled water now, like many of us are, how do, is that, does it matter, how do we evaluate the bottled water that we're buying? Do we have to go to each company, or are we, can be assured that that water is being tested by the FDA, and water testing is being done, that arsenic and all of these things are not gonna be present in the bottled water?
Right. So you correctly stated FDA regulates bottled water, the state does not. As a common sense courtesy, we went ahead and tested bottled water, and what you look for is, on spring water, it has to say where the source is. So we went and throughout the state, went to a number of retail properties where we could get access to a broader variety of bottled water. Almost all of it tested non-detect for all the PFAS compounds. A couple of them came up very low, well below the proposed state standards, so what we would consider to be very safe. One source, which unfortunately had very broad distribution in the state, out of Haverhill, Massachusetts, tested quite high. They did immediately put treatment on, which brought it down to non-detect, but they also went out of business at the same time. If you go on our website, again, I hate sending everybody to the website, but it's where we have information, there is a listing of the name brands and the sources. So if you go to the store, look for the name brand, and it lists that same source, you have the testing results, the raw test results for those.
All of those things, not just the PFOs and PFAs?
Uh, we only did for the, we only did for the PFAS compounds.
Okay. But does the FDA do some testing on water that is getting distributed, because it's a consumable product, so that it has to meet?
Yeah, bottled water is not tested as much as a public water system is tested. There are a couple of bills currently before the legislature to change that in our state. Because FDA runs that program at the federal level, the Department of Health and Human Services runs it here in the state, we regulate the public water systems. Like I said, we went out and did the testing, 'cause the, you know, you get your test results and you're concerned, the first thing you do is go grab bottled water. So we want to make sure. The state contract is with Manadnoc Water, they've been tested all the way through this process, they're non-detect every time we've tested them. So that's what we, we share.
Thank you.
Okay. And you can all probably figure out where the bottled water was, when, you know, you all can figure that out, we don't have to state that. Yes, ma'am?
Erin Westling, Ken Hazen, Luntling. I was at, I was one of, I think, five Londonderry residents that was at the permit meeting in October in Merrimack. I just wanted to know that what the status is. I just heard you say that they've been granted the permit. At that point in time, I signed up for email updates as to what was going on there. I think I've received one since that meet, since that meeting. So I, I wanted to know, with the stay that was put in by the courts, what are they being held responsible for, and what is that system that they are putting in or planning to put in right now? Where you said they have twelve months to put that in, but we have, is that going back to the seventy parts per trillion, or is that coming back to the number that the state is looking for? 'Cause then we're back to square one there, it seems.
Can I, can I, 'cause there's like three things inside of that one. So the air permit, which is what that hearing was about, actually has nothing to do with the drinking water standard. The technology that they proposed, we agreed, was the best technology, but the way they wanted to operate it, we did not agree was the best way to operate it. And so the permit that they have been issued requires them to operate it at a higher temperature and a longer residency time that they had recommended. They had asked for three-quarters of a second at sixteen-hundred degrees Fahrenheit. They're required to have a full second at eighteen-thirty-two, which is a thousand degrees Celsius. According to the EPA's reports that are most recently put out, that should provide ninety-nine percent effectiveness. At that point, you can't measure the effectiveness, so we're doing it by operating parameters, not by external measurements.
Also, was listening in on the town meeting where this was discussed in October, there was a, a question brought up as to the locations of more central aquifers in town, and if those are being monitored. I think there was a question that was, so it was brought up that I think that, you know, maybe we should start looking at, at those. Is the town actively doing that? Do they have their own sites that they are monitoring, or is the town relying on what the residents are bringing forward?
The answer is, so we did a townwide water study, and we're learning about this as we're going. And I talked to, I believe I talked to Jeff about it some as well, and we talked to others about how to test an aquifer, and we, we haven't come up with a good answer for that. My, you know, my personal concern was, is if, if it's there, it's everywhere. And that's why I brought up the piece about whether, you know, a legal line versus a scientific line. So that, that's, that's where we're very frustrated. But the answer is, is yes, we're trying to, we're trying everything and every idea. But we're, you know, but we're figuring it out as we're going, unfortunately.
But, so if, if the town is, does the town have specific sites that they are monitoring in this, or will they have specific spots, or rely on the residents and HOAs and things like that coming forward for their data?
I, I should have finished, I'm sorry, I forgot the back end of your question. We're asking, we have asked anyone who has tested their well to please share it with us, so that we can track it as well. Okay.
Yeah, and we shared, I mean, right when our water quality study was done this past year, we shared that immediately with these guys, so that if there were areas that came back with high levels of PFAS or PFOA, they could further look into it. I mean, they have, they have the resources and means to look into these further. We don't have that kind of a staff. But they can look at it and say, okay, it's testing high over here, what is the reason that it's occurring over in this area?
I guess it just, so the air quality, is that being measured at Moose Hill? It just really sits very uncomfortably with me. That, I mean, that's where our, our youngest in the, in the town are sitting, so I, I just, it's concerning.
The air quality station does work there, but Clark, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe it currently monitors for PFAS, does it?
There is no standard methodology to do ambient air testing for PFAS today. We are working with a national lab that thinks they've come up with a way to do it. We're waiting to get the test results back from them to see whether it actually works. But as of right now, there is no standard method to test ambient levels of PFAS in the air.
Thank you.
You can probably sense our frustration.
Oh, right, and it's shared by many. I understand.
Okay, sir, I think I'm with you. Thank, thank for being up here. Deb, you're right, you're after him, that's why I asked him to come up here and sit up here. I've got you in the back, sir.
Greg DePass, 21 Welch Road. Couple of questions, you already answered some, so that's awesome. First question, I had, we actually have had testing for a while, and came back with minimal results, so still under the twelve, but trying to be proactive. I had a backwash Centar carbon filter, some sort of carbon filter, right, backwash. Is that granul, granulated activated carbon? Is that the GAC, or is that something completely different? Something, something carbon, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that sounds like something potentially different.
I could ask the, the well company, like, hey, listen, you know, can you, based on this conversation, so thank you.
So great, is there a model number on it?
Uh, they just said backwashing, high-activity Centar carbon. I can get you the model number later.
Typically, carbon isn't backwashed in these systems.
Well, that, so that was kind of the follow-on question, 'cause it sounds like there's like filter replacements, and if this is backwashing, same with reverse osmosis, is, is there a threat to the environment by dumping these things that have been filtered back into the environment, and is there a way to actually capture it down the line?
So the answer is yes to all of that. What I would suggest is, Jeff's very good about answering his phone and answering his email. I take a picture of what you have and, and what you, model numbers you have, and he can, he's extremely helpful.
Okay, so the systems that you're recommending are the ones that would actually capture it and not put it back into the environment?
So I believe the ones that Clark has been talking about is point-of-entry, and the best way to do is to capture it and then dispose of it.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah, so, as I said, there's three technologies. Reverse osmosis will take whatever and put it back, but you're not damaging the environment in that if it's coming from your well and you're putting it back in your septic system, it's the same compound that was sitting on your property, just reintroduced to your property. That's not a great answer, but it's not a terrible answer.
Right, I'm not getting it.
The other two technologies both lock the, the compounds in.
Okay.
In ion resin, there's actually a way to release it and consolidate it and concentrate it. In the case of GAC, it adsorbs, which is stronger than absorbing. Think of absorbing as it goes into the cells of a sponge, well then when you squeeze the sponge, it comes back out. Absorb, it actually locks in to the material itself. And so what we then recommend is, you send it to a modern landfill or an incinerator. When it is put into a proper modern landfill, it is basically sequestered away. So right now, we do recommend GAC, we do recommend that it be taken to a proper landfill, but it can be taken as a non-hazardous waste at landfill.
Okay. Is there any, does it ever break down in the body, or is it completely, like, whatever gets added in just continues to accumulate?
It exits with other materials.
Over, over time, there will be, right? So if I exercise more?
Your septic system.
Go me.
It goes to your septic system.
Into the gym. Don't laugh.
Well, so let's move on from that.
Sorry about that, all right. And, um, last question, so we actually had our well tested by the state. You might have been there, I don't know, you look very familiar, maybe not. But then there was a follow-on, my wife actually volunteered to be like a blood tester, so they actually got some sort of baseline. Is that something you're aware of, or was that a completely separate program? Like some sort of blood testing by the state?
Yeah, we, we do not do blood testing. Under the new health protective laws, HIPAA, which is what they're basically known as, we are not allowed to see any individual's health information of any kind. Public health, through the Department of Health and Human Services, did do some limited blood testing, and for whatever reason, your wife was identified through that. We would absolutely not have access to her data. What we do get is, they consolidate up in whatever study, and then we get the outcome of that study. We have a couple of people who are cleared for HIPAA data, because they happen to be really good at spatial analysis, and they get pulled into HHS's studies if there's a need for spatial analysis.
And it wasn't a bad thing, right? She volunteered this, she had to sign paperwork. I think it's a great program, and something else to push forward for people who are concerned. And if there was something, whether it was you or HHS, to make that more widely known, because I think with all the things going on here, trying to get that word out, get baselines, and then being able to track it over time would be kind of critical.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir.
Deb?
Hi, Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. This is kind of on topic and off a topic at the same time. For a long time, a few people in town have had very, very deep concerns about drinking water before these PFOAs came involved in it, and, and that is about the arsenic levels that do cause cancers and lesions to, to people. And it is very high, and the more building and developing you do, you agitate the granite, and that activates even more arsenic to escape. And the thing is, is with the PFOAs, the filter systems, and I was just talking to Rick at Mainline, who was explaining this to me about the systems he installs, and he was saying to me, you can get these systems for as little as five hundred to a thousand dollars, and they last for a good period of time. Whereas for the arsenic, you're talking anywhere to between a thousand to three thousand dollars, and you have to replace them every two to three years, and that costs, that two to three is always gonna keep going up. And I'm concerned as a resident, because it's not just this part of the water, it's all drinking water, and, and we have an issue, and we need to think about it, 'cause this is gonna affect reselling your houses. This is gonna affect everything in our town, and it, and it's very, 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 very important. And we have been asking for a long time for a water plan, and hoping and praying that we didn't need one, but we do need one. And I, I don't know what we can do as a town, and I'm hoping that you guys can figure something out, but even though the PFOAs are a great concern, the arsenic is even more concerning. And people should really be aware of that. I don't know if you can speak to arsenic at all? I know you can never get rid of it, but it, is there a way to settle it down? Are there other alternatives to purifying it without having to get these extremely expensive filters constantly?
I agree with you, arsenic is a terrible issue.
Um, arsenic, is that like a, a different hour-long conversation?
Well, this is about quality of drinking water.
I understand. When you told me at the beginning you wanted to bring up arsenic, is this a separate meeting that we need to have about arsenic?
We could certainly come back and have a separate issue, or a separate meeting, and we can bring people who do know more about the filtration technology for arsenic. I'm not an expert on arsenic filtration, I've become pretty good at PFAS filtration. But I, I would just agree with you, arsenic is, you know, we, we know a lot more about what it does, and nothing is good.
Exactly.
It has huge impacts from early development all the way through late stages of life, and so that's why we do stress if you're getting testing.
I kind of freaked out when I saw the red chart.
Get more testing.
It was kind of scary, and I'm sure that chart.
We could absolutely, if you wanted to.
Can we set up a separate session with the arsenic expert and bring that person back?
Yeah, especially on the filtration technology, like you said, I'm not quite as versed there, and I wouldn't want to give any bad information. We could bring Brandon back, he's.
That would be great.
He's our filtration guru.
Set that up as a separate one.
Sure.
Just basically not on PFAS and St. Cobains, but on drinking water. So I've got a gentleman in the back who raised his hand earlier.
Even though I had more questions, but.
Deb, I'm, I'm assuming you were done?
No, I should never assume no. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Ask Paul later.
As soon as I get through everybody else, I'd be happy to come back to you.
Neil Dunn, 21 Sherwood Road. I guess one concerning thing I heard today was, tonight was, TCI won't let us test, or won't let the state test, and they reside here in Londonderry. Is there anything the town council, the building department, or the state can recommend to, to find out what's going on there?
So this is the first we're hearing about it, that, you know, they will not let DES go in and test? So yes, we'd like to engage with them and find out why, and find out what it is we can do.
Thank you. And Mr. Dolan's, when he brought up this exploratory committee, he was talking about west of High Range. Based on the maps where the twelve and fourteen, there are higher concentrations to the east of High Range. I would hope you'd consider reimbursement for any property that is impacted by these higher than a twelve or fourteen, or wherever we settle.
Absolutely. The, the west of the High Range is just what the, the consent decree points out, but yes, I, I think any well that has a high PFAS would be included.
And then the other thought is, what does the state recommend of new wells being, and new houses being put in the decree area? Or, and then from the town's point of view, are we requiring developers or new wells that are drilled to be tested, so that we don't have to always have the buyer beware, and the buyer moves in and finds out that there's an issue with PFAS or arsenic or something else?
Good question. So part of the problem with wells is, and this has all been explained to me by the state and by legal authorities, is that the state doesn't have any authority over private wells, the town doesn't have authority over private wells, but I do think it's a good idea to figure out what we can, if, if there's something we can do. This is a learned process, right? So I gotta find out the answer to your question.
Yeah, there is a bill pending before the legislature that would require if a new well is dug, that it has to be tested, and the results have to be shared with a prospective homeowner. As of right now, that is not a requirement.
And because it's not a requirement, the town can't require it? Is that?
Well, I mean, you know what? Let's test that.
I believe Londonderry requires a CO, a water test.
We do require a water test, but, but are we necessarily testing for PFOAs, is what I want to find out. Yeah, and I think it's a good question.
Alright, thank you very much, thank you all for your time and volunteer.
Alright, I saw several hands over here, I, I, I don't know who I saw first. So if you guys can help me.
Jim Murphy, 4 Chandler Drive, uh, out of John's neighborhood. The, um, so I guess there's some misinformation out there because I was on the impression that, uh, if we got our own tests now, that, and we're in the, the blue area, that we would not be part of the St. Obane settlement or decree, consent decree, or whatever their words are. Um, I am on the addendum three list, my, my property's on that list to be tested. My other question was, do we have any dates on when that's gonna happen or...
Please proceed.
Yeah, so at this point, we don't have any dates as to when St. Obane is going to proceed with that testing. Uh, it's probably largely contingent upon, um, DES's ability to enforce the 12 parts per trillion.
Okay. Um, so, do we know that if, so, since I'm on the li, on the list to be tested, if I go out and do a test on my own, does that now take me away from the St. Obane issues?
So if you were to, uh, test on your own and your sample were to come back above 12, to date, St. Obane has continued to voluntarily provide residents who test their own water with, uh, alternate water. And if and when, uh, we can enforce down to the 12 again, then they would still be responsible for hooking you up to some sort of permanent, uh, solution for your water quality.
That's good to know. And last question is, um, my well is very deep, I've had to have the pump replaced twice and it was very expensive just to replace all the wiring. Have you guys seen any difference between shallow wells versus deep wells as PFOAs go?
Uh, so I, I haven't looked specifically at Londonderry, uh, but I, I did have data from some of the other areas that have been impacted by St. Obane. Uh, and it's not so much a function of well depth, uh, so much as a function of the amount of casing and, uh, soil above the bedrock. Uh, if there's more soil and deeper casing, there tends to be lower concentrations of PFAS, um, but that's just a probability, so you, you still have to test your individual well to confirm.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, to give you an idea, sir, mine is 550 feet deep and I'm at 14.
The water's cold.
No doubt about that. So help, help me with who is raising their hand. Cheryl Ann? I, I'm gonna come back to you. I, I'm just gonna get the other folks first.
Cheryl Ann Pierce, 23 Mayflower Drive. Um, I have two pages of questions, so I'm gonna pick four. Um, do we answer the gentleman that just spoke? I had my water tested on my own when we first heard about this back in October through a Facebook post on, from a neighbor that had their well tested and it came up high. And all you have to do is send your results to, not Jeff Martz, Martin.
Uh, yeah, you can send them to myself, Jeff Martz, or, uh, there's also an email on, on the website for Goldar Associates, uh, they're St. Obane's consultant.
Yes, but Goldar Associates forces you to send it to DES so that DES can send it to him, 'cause I've personally dealt with Ross Bennett on that and...
Okay, I, I don't disagree with you, 'cause I know who Ross Bennett is too.
I'm sure a lot of us do.
So, so if you have, um, if you have two pages worth of questions, whatever...
No, I have four, four questions.
But whatever other questions, um, you know, send them to DES, I'm sure Jeff will be helpful.
Oh, Jeff and I have spoken on the phone many times.
He's great.
He's wonderful. We just can't keep him. Okay, so, um, my next question, when I looked at these layers of maps that you have available and you take a layer off and take a layer off, I came to light that every landfill in this state is leaching way over 70 parts per trillion into the groundwater around every one of those landfills. What are we doing about that?
Go ahead. Yeah, so, uh, most ground, most landfills in the state of New Hampshire have what's called a groundwater management permit and they establish a groundwater management zone, so it's a zone that's identified where the contamination is, uh, located. Uh, so the state required, uh, landfills to test for PFAS in their perimeter monitoring wells and to identify whether or not that PFAS was moving outside the groundwater management zone. And if there were indications it were, uh, they're required to, uh, test off-site residential water supply wells that could potentially be affected. Uh, so there's, there's a group at DES that, uh, that reviews that data from, uh, landfills and the responsible parties that own landfills.
So don't we own a landfill?
I'm sorry, I...
Does Londonderry own a landfill?
Londonderry has a capped landfill, which is under EPA monitoring.
Auburn Road?
Auburn Road.
But if you look at the layer of maps, it's leaching more than 70 parts per trillion into the groundwater.
So, the London, I, I'm, we have...
Just 'cause you put a chain-linked fence up isn't gonna stop the PFAS from...
So the Londonderry landfill has been closed for almost 30 years now, right? Been closed for almost 30 years, it's capped and, uh, the people in, generally in that area are on public water. And, um, we are still being represented by legal, um, counsel in that whole piece and still working closely with the EPA. So I believe we're operating within the federal regulations at this time. Are you guys familiar with the Auburn Road landfill?
Uh, it did show up on, uh, one of my maps, I'm not familiar with the, uh, specific details of the landfill, but i- in general, like compared to the, uh, distribution of contamination we're seeing with St. Obane where it's been an air release, uh, in general, most of the contamination adjacent to landfills is fairly localized and we're not seeing widespread, uh, community-wide, uh, impacts.
Cheryl Ann, it's, it's, we get quarterly reports on it, it's monitored on a regular basis by the EPA. If you'd like to see those reports, we're happy to, to show them to you.
We have to ask for them?
Well, they're publicly available.
No, I'm telling you, yeah, they're publicly available if you'd like to see them.
But almost everyone in that area, we, has moved to public water.
And if you walk your dog along there and he licks out of a puddle, does he die like her dog did?
Okay.
Um, what is the blood serum test that I can ask my doctor to do? Now, Gene Shene was put, had put out way back when we were talking about Pease and Hampstead, that anybody could have their blood tested for free. And I was slow out of the gate and by the time I talked to her about it, we stopped doing that.
There was anybody...
Somebody knows what kind of test it is.
It was anybody at Pease or whose children were in the daycare centers on Pease. It was very special to them. There was a second, smaller sampling done for people who were in the Merrimack and Litchfield area and a small piece of Londonderry. Uh, as far as the test itself, like you said, if you go to the DHHS website, Health and Human Services, they have an information sheet that identifies what blood test you would ask for. Your doctor has to special order it. There is also a sheet that helps you in explaining to your doctor what your concerns are. Um, but we, as I said, I, any personal health information test to get it or anything else, that's not us. We do public drinking water and the other end of where the water goes. Once, the, the inside you part, we don't do. We're not cleared to, to know anything about you individually.
My only introduction with that lady was, my question was, can I use my tap water and my humidifier? And she said, "Oh, yes, and you cannot."
Yes, you can. The inhalation is, is not a concern, the concern is ingestion.
I guess it depends who you talk to.
If you put it directly into your mouth with the intent to swallow, then you should be concerned and that's the real issue. If you put a little bit of water into your humidifier and it goes up into the air, the amount that you breathe in is minuscule, but you will drink two liters of water today, that's roughly four and a half pounds of water. You'll do it tomorrow, you'll do it the following day, you'll do it in July, you'll do it in December. It's the most monotonous thing we do, we drink water every single day. Your humidifier might provide a trace amount, but compared to what you drink, it's insignificant. Uh, you do not absorb it through your skin, it would only be the part that you inhale and, and while, yes, and I run humidifiers in my house also, yes, they do provide humidity into the entire house. The volume of the air in the house versus the volume I breathe is relatively small.
Back to the fellow that spoke before me, I did go ahead and have my well tested on my own, I paid for it, it was $275. How do I get reimbursed for that? Because I'm in the blue zone...
Right.
And I was proactive and I didn't wait for the state to...
You can approach St. Obane, uh, and they may or may not choose to do it. As we said, under the consent decree, we have not limited your ability to go after any damages you feel. You have the ability to go after any damages you feel you are entitled to. What we can force them to do is do the testing. If you were lined up to do it and you chose to do it in advance, we can't push them for that. Uh, certainly we have encouraged them, which is about all we can do, that if somebody has gone off and done work that they would've had to do anyway, it's a good faith effort to reimburse them, but that's at their choice, not ours.
Ross Bennett told me, "Well, that hasn't come up yet."
Okay, raise it with them, make it come up. We, we cannot make them do that.
So, I asked Mr....
So, so here's the guy from St. Obane who called Town Hall. Heard we were, heard we were having a meeting tonight.
...to you and to, uh, Town Manager Kevin Smith. Uh, my phone number's 518-308-5682.
So we're gonna get this information to you? This is the guy who says from St. Obane who says he's gonna help. So let's get everybody his number. Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that's shared with, uh, with you, just, uh, Kirby here has the voicemail, but, yeah, he, he, no hesitation, give me a call, tell me how I can help. I know, he's gonna hate me. But that's, that's what we get from St. Obane, just to give you an example.
Oh, I know, it took me talking to a state senator to get Ross Bennett to call me back because Goldar represents...
Yeah, but we, but we got this guy's number.
Well...
I think it's a cellphone, too.
Put it out there. Put it out there.
Put it on the website.
If I could ask, I spoke with you today about whether or not the musk wash and the Little Cohas had been tested and you said, "No, you didn't see any record of it." I asked Kevin Smith directly this question in front of Kirby and he said, "We asked DES to do it and they said they won't." So now we're looking for a vendor to do it. And then it was passed off to Lisa Drabek and I spoke with her and she assured me that Kevin had told her that it was done recently. I'm a little bit confused because now I'm hearing you don't even know how to test the aquifer.
Um, I didn't say that we didn't know how to test the aquifer. What I'm saying is, is that I have not been given a proven method of how to test it accurately. Now, I have told this is that there are not standards for surface water and that, um, but we have tested the surface water. So the answer to the question is, is as far as the aquifers are concerned, we're still trying to figure that part out. That's, and I'm the person who asked the question at that meeting, so I'm very interested.
I certainly can understand that, 'cause I know where you live. Um, and I have one more question of the audience. I passed around a green folder asking people that have had cancer or know someone who's had cancer in Londonderry to share their information. Does that get lost?
So Cheryl Ann? Cheryl Ann? Cheryl, yeah, Cheryl, you can ask the audience here and that's fine. I, normally we don't do that, but if you're talking to the microphone, it's gonna go to everybody at home, 'cause nobody at home heard a word you said. They'll all hear it behind you as well and I'm just trying to help you, 'cause you want everybody, you want, you're asking everybody, so please.
Okay. Anybody that's had cancer, knows someone who's had cancer that lived in Londonderry or moved away from Londonderry, would you please email me at C-H-E-R-Y-L-A-N-N-B-P-56@gmail.com?
Now it'll go out on the internet when they stream it. Cheryl Ann? So, I think I have, this lady right here has been waiting patiently. I see ya.
And just, so everyone is aware, there were 13 surface water samplings that were done as a part of the town's water testing program. It, it included Beaver Brook, the Little Cohas, Shields Brook, Watts Brook, Nettis Skag Brook, Cohas Brook, Moose Hill Pond Outlet and Scobie Pond. PFOA was detected within all 13 surface water samples collected and it ranged anywhere from 9.8 to 42 parts per trillion with the mean concentration of, uh, 20.5. As John just stated though, and it states this in the study, that surface water quality standards have not been developed for PFAS currently.
And trust me, it's a little frustrating, isn't it? Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Hi, Michelle Flynn, 14 Stokes Road. And hi Clark, I work in Litchfield, I'm the one that set up Campbell High for you guys, for Troy Brown and the PFAS in Litchfield.
Oh.
I'm Michelle, so...
Oh, hi.
I, I had to give him a plug there. Anyway, um, earlier in the night, um, this gentleman here, uh, said that the, uh, the levels that leach, are, uh, leaching, could leach slowly and there was another gentleman up here that said, um, his, he had tested his water and his, if his, his might've gone up and you said it was less than 20%. I had my water tested by the sampling for DES in September and a few weeks later, my neighbors were tested and there, I get a letter in the mail saying that their water tested at 26 of 14 parts per trillion respectively, that's over 120% and that went up in weeks. So what does that mean for my property? And should, well, I, I don't, it's not that I don't wanna have my water tested by myself, I would like the DES to do it again.
Jeff?
Yeah, so i- in terms of, uh, knowing what one neighbor's water quality is relative to your own, there's a lot of variables that go into that. Uh, basically, as water falls on the ground, it takes different pathways to get into your well and there can be multiple pathways that water takes to get into the same well. So when your pump turns on, you could actually be drinking a mixture of water, water that comes into your well that may be high in PFAS and, uh, water that comes into your well that may be low in PFAS and you have a resulting average depending on where your pump's at. Um, now, as the seasons change over time, you know, the relative con- contribution from the high PFAS zone and the low PFAS zone may change, that, that's one thing that we're hypothesizing. Um, but also, your neighbor may tap different zones in the bedrock aquifer and may have very different water quality than yours. Uh, particularly in the town of Bedford where we have a lot of concentrated well data, you can go up and down the street and see one that's non-detect, one that's above the standard and they're right next door to each other. So there's a lot of variability within a short distance in fractured rock.
Okay, that, that's logical, I just, because Kevin knows where I live, I live right on, actually, my property includes the marsh, uh, which is Cohas, I think? Isn't that Cohas?
It's part of the Little Cohas, yeah.
Yeah, Little Cohas. So, um, my, my, my horse and my goat drink that water. My horse has developed tumors. So, um, the testing that was done, can, uh, the water, if I'm getting, if I have PFA's or PFOAs, because we were about a thousand yards from the, the diesel that spilled on, um, 28, so now it, it could be leaching in, okay? Um, can, can that stain your sinks? 'Cause I'm noticing a lot of staining lately in all my, that I cannot get out.
I, I wouldn't expect the specific PFAS chemicals to stain your sink, um, but if, if there are, if you're close to where the diesel spilled, uh, that can change, uh, some of the biology in the aquifer and that can change, uh, minerals such as iron and manganese that could be released into your groundwater, so that, that could, could result in staining, but a lot of times staining is, is the result of dissolved minerals.
Okay, okay. And, um, just, you know, one last question is, when, if I have my water retested and I, if I can have it tested again by the DES, which I hope I can, um, and it, and we find out that the, the PFOAs have gone up, we will still qualify for the, um, uh, the filtration, right? To be eligible for the...
Are you inside the blue line?
No.
Then, under the consent decree, St. Obane is not immediately responsible and would not necessarily, what we'd have to take a look is where you are. There are other contaminating sites in the town...
Mm-hmm.
And it could be that one of them has a responsible party, most of them don't have consent decrees, but they might be responsible for that.
Okay, 'cause the question I was actually alluding to was when, um, Mr. Farrell talked about the, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dolan talked about the plan that he had, wanted to propose. Would that be something that me as a private well owner would qualify for if my PFOAs go up?
I would hope that our attorney would help us develop a plan that we could, we could all get approved to help the whole town. I don't wanna see the town segmented, I wanna help everybody.
Sure.
If you got an issue and we can, and we can figure out, the undissociated fund balance is, is, is where we save money in our budget and what we have in, in unexpected revenue?
Yep.
It's your money. It's our money.
Oh, I know, I work with budgets in Litchfield.
So, 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 so you know. So if there's a way that we can help everybody, I hope we can.
Okay. Okay.
I hope we can find a legal path to do that.
Okay, that's all I wanted. Thank you.
Okay, so, let me stand up for a minute. All right, so, Doc, I think you were next. Is there anyone, yes? So, is there anyone who has not spoken who wants to speak? Right, sit right behind him, Mac, okay? Right? We're gonna try, we're gonna have another one of these, but I'm gonna try to start winding things down. Go ahead.
Dennis Martin, 182 Pillsbury Road. I guess, this has been a learning experience for me, because I really didn't know what was going on until I walked in.
It's for all of us.
Yeah. How is the, how's the water in the schools?
There are, water in schools are on town water, right?
Correct.
They're on town water?
I was just curious, because I was thinking about that in my head.
Yeah.
The kids getting this, okay. Now, I live over in 182 Pillsbury Road, and I know at one time, there was always talk about Holton Circle had fuel being jumped back there at one time, many, many years ago.
Superfund site at one time.
Yeah, it was a long time ago, yeah, but you're right, it was.
So, will I have an effect of any type of this stuff? I know I looked on that map, and it had me at the yellow color, which is at 12 or something.
Holton Circle has town water.
No, I have, I have an Atsian well.
It's been mitigated.
Yeah.
That was about, that was about 25 years ago?
It was, it was declared safe, I'd say about 10 years ago.
Okay, I just, I didn't know, because-
But we can dig into it and find out more information.
Okay, just, next time I come to the next meeting, I'll ask that question again.
No, we can probably get it before that. We'll get, we'll get you more information.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, Mac?
Mac Leatherby, 7 Charmoran Row. First off, I just wanna thank you all for putting this on. This was really, I think, helpful. And one of the things is, what about, you know, testing programs and things? As we're trying to discuss the problem, what I'm hearing tonight is, is that we're still not quite baseline. I mean, certainly, DES has some maps and things, but I've looked at some of the reports and things that you guys have done, and, you know, we've done some testing since 2016, and with the new laws and things like that, it's hard to know who's got the, you know, wells, you know, that have changed, et cetera. And it seems like it's fairly expensive. It's 250 to 350 bucks for doing this. And I just wanna point out, maybe there's some type of scaling that could be done for the, for the town or something like that, so that there could be more of a cross-residential property, you know, gauging in terms of what really the problem is. I'm not convinced that we've done that. I mean, does anybody have any input about that?
So, one thing about that is, when we went out and we did the, with the voluntary testing, and we went out looking for wells to test, it took us much longer, because we basically had to beg people to let us test their wells, right? And that was before this, but we were literally begging people-
Yeah.
-to please let us come in and test their wells.
Yeah, I know you guys were, yeah.
And they, so, I think we'd probably get a better response now.
I think you would.
But, you know, but, so, one of the things is, we're asking everybody to send us our results, so that we can work with DES and start working in the direction that you're talking about, because I think it's a good idea.
I, I think that that's what needs to be done. We just need to baseline the problem, and there needs to be some way to attract people into it, so that we, they can know where they stand in things for their families and things, because people are paranoid, and, you know, anyway, just, my point is, as you start to roll it out, I think it's a worthwhile thing. And related to that, perhaps there are some grants, federal or state grants, that may help offset, that the town can apply for, that are gonna help either for the testing, but also, my understanding, I spoke with Kevin a bit about this, you know, even, you know, if we decide that, you know, we really do need to have mesocic water in the town and things. I think Tom's plan is a Band-Aid. It's a good, good start. I think it's a really good thinking about the problem and things, but I'm not convinced that it's more than a short-term type of thing, and, you know, we, we need to discuss, you know, as residents, what's gonna, you know, stop the problem, solve it as soon as we can, but also, try to think long-term. So, I appreciate everybody's time on it.
I think you're absolutely right. We need crawl, walk, run.
Yes, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Totally agree with you. Okay, is there anyone else who has not spoken who would like to speak? Okay, so, we're gonna take the next five minutes and see if there's any quick questions, and so we can get these guys home. Yes, come on.
Did you get my exercise?
Yeah, these guys have day jobs.
Yeah, sorry. Let's, oh, somebody left a mute. Phone here, by the way. Phone?
Did you leave your phone?
Oh, yeah. Free phone.
Mine's not mine.
You don't want my messages.
Maybe we do. Greg DePass, 21 Wilt Road, thank you for having me again. So, you were talking about, and, sorry, so, my question was basically, is there something other than, you know, household treatment, like, larger scale? Back to the question earlier, in terms of, you know, what can the town do other than pump water around town? Is there a way to treat the aquifer? And that, I think part of that, you were talking about, right now, there's so much groundwater and different paths of water coming in, it affects the aquifer, it keeps going, which led me to think, like, when does this problem go away or not become a problem anymore? Right? Assuming that Merrimack is not being polluted anymore, and superfund sites are shut down, like, what's our timeframe to kinda deal with this before we have to say, you know, enough is enough? Sorry, that was for them.
Okay. Yeah, so, in terms of the cleaning up a fractured bedrock aquifer, there's a lot of complexity there, because a lot of times, the fractures are very small, and you can only pump a small amount of water. So, in terms of putting in a town-wide treatment system, you know, that'd be very difficult on the scale necessary to clean up the entire fractured bedrock aquifer in Londonderry. In terms of the estimated timeframe for this to clean up on its own, I would suggest that it's going to be a long time. I know St. Cobain has submitted a modeling report a few years ago that estimates the timeframe in a few decades. DES is still reviewing that report, and I wouldn't necessarily agree or disagree with those conclusions, but it's gonna be the foreseeable future.
Is that primarily because of this, at least in this area, that the aerial stuff that's deposited, and it just keeps kind of leaching in from that, or is there some other source that?
So, so, part of the issue with PFAS and the longevity is that the PFAS absorb, to some extent, to soil, so, it takes some period of time for it to work down through the soil into the fractured rock, and then, you know, pumped out through your, through your well, or discharged the surface water and washed out to the ocean. So, it's just a long-term cycle.
Here's a great example. When did St. Cobain open in Merrimack?
1984, it was ChemFab, and then, St. Cobain purchased ChemFab, but ChemFab essentially did the same type of work.
It was four years ago that Merrimack became vitally aware of all this, so that gives you some sort of a timeframe. I don't know if you were here at the beginning, but it was, it's 200 million to put in water. You got all that?
Yep, yep.
Great.
That's what I was trying to figure out, is there an alternative, are there alternatives? Smaller sites, microfiltration, but it sounds like it's either at the house, or point of entry, or HOA-type site, or nothing.
Sounds like that's the fastest.
Yeah, okay.
May I add, there's, one thing that I've learned recently is that these chemicals coming from St. Cobain are not naturally occurring. They're, they're created by the company and the polluter. The other things that came up, that we're gonna have another meeting on arsenic, that's naturally occurring. You can never get rid of that. You, you have to live with it and filter it out.
Right, and-
So, so, there's different kinds of things that we're talking about, that PFAS is not in our environment, and it was only put there by a polluter, and, but the other stuff is al, has always been there and always will be there.
And that's a really good point, right? So, that kinda goes back to the conversation at the very beginning, in terms of protecting, you know, us, right, residents of New Hampshire. When people come here, we realize, hey, listen, radon is an issue, you could potentially have to mitigate that. Arsenic is an issue, you should potentially mitigate that. Nobody came here and said, hey, you know, PFAS, that's an issue, right? Until recently, when this kinda became, became prevalent. I think that's the piece that people are really focused on. Maybe not only that, right, but at least that's the piece that it's outside of our, ironically, right? It's outside of our control, but it was done to us from an outside party. Right.
Whereas, they say in Merrimack, St. Cobain's a bad neighbor. Seriously, that's what they say. Yeah, Vinny, you haven't spoken yet, go ahead.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Vinny Caro, 103 High Range Road. I am in the blue zone. We have water being provided to our family from, from St. Cobain. Just so we're all on the same page, I think some important things are, is if you haven't had your well tested, it's $275 or so. Whether, you know, you go to the state, and if the state won't cover it through St. Cobain, it's well worth it. Okay, you talked about arsenic, my arsenic level is higher than my PFOA is. So, all these things are gonna come in handy. You mentioned to let you know of test results. Is letting the state, we're letting who you're pointing to know, Kevin?
So, we, yes, let the state know, but we'd also like to know.
Okay, so, we're sending emails to Kevin? I just, so, everybody understands, so, you know, I'm not sure, and Jeff has done a fantastic job, and his team, Jim Martin, I've been in contact with all of them. We're currently in the, you know, we were above the 12 or 14, now we're, you know, now that the limit's back up to the 70, we're, we're in the holding pattern like everybody else. Our whole house, if we wanna do that, my quotation is for $4,500 to do a whole house, but to take care of my arsenic and also my radon and my water, we already have an air radon mitigator, that bill's now 10 grand. Okay, so, you know, we're gonna go out and spend $10,000, and we're still in the middle of, you know, legal obligations, that's what we're up against. So, just so everyone, I mean, my personal thing, it's $275, get it tested, find out what's going on with the family, but we're gonna send results to you, Kevin, so you guys have the results, and we already know that the DES gets it. And so, everybody in the, in the town knows, this is, I mean, I'm sorry, but you're at what level?
Well, our house is at 202, the neighbors across the street are at, like, 560 or 570 times per trillion.
God bless you.
But there, there's a-
And I'm worried about, I'm worried about-
There's a different, there's a different contamination based on a spill.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand, but, but this is what we need to know. You know, like you said, you had a hard time. I remember 20-something years ago, when, when we did the water testing, and it was the same thing, you know, when Solid Waste Committee and everybody else were trying to, you know, beg people to go, and I was one of the volunteers and went out and collected water samples. I mean, I'd just go to somebody's house and just say, hey, we're gonna do it for free, and they wanted nothing to do with it. And I would love to have that done. So, get it done, get it tested, whether you're gonna pay for it yourself or not. Mr. Dolan, fantastic idea. Hopefully, we can bring this to fruition and help out some of the families, but get tested and let everybody know, let the DES know, Jeff and his crew, and Kevin, let everybody know what's going on, so we have a total picture of the town.
Yep, information is power.
You got it.
All right. Yes. All right, we're gonna wrap this up, Ray, so five minutes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, Ray Barson through Gary Drive. I'm glad we gave an opportunity for the folks to speak here, and, and I appreciate what the town is projecting to do, to try to help out the citizens with doing some testing or, or at least providing, if they put in a system and so forth. It's a step in the right direction, okay? But the, this picture is a lot bigger, okay? We're talking about PFOAs, PFOSs, all well and good, that's a problem. It's not going away. It's, it's a big problem, it's not going away, but we do need to get a handle on it, okay? But I, I wanna make sure that people understand, and I'm not here to worry people unnecessarily. However, we have a lot of contaminants other than PFOAs and PFOSs that are leaching out into the bedrock, into the aquifer, into the ground, okay? And we can't kick the can down the road any longer, okay? We need to take action. Now, it's not just the town's responsibility. We have the Department of Environmental Services. They will gladly help us, if they can, okay?
And they've agreed to come back and to help us.
They were restricted by money. Consequently, we need to go to the legislature. And let's be clear, if we're talking about putting in filtration systems for people in town here, that should not be taxpayer money. We have responsible parties. Those are the big people, Dow Chemical, so forth, okay? They got all the lawyers, they got all the money, okay? They are the responsible contaminators. And as far as St. Cobain's, they're the big money people, too. The state of New Hampshire needs to step up and say, "We wanna shut you down," okay? Because they are still polluting. They can no longer continue to pollute, okay?
So, Ray, Ray, the good news is-
What?
The good news is-
What's the good news?
Is Merrimack has already taken that step, and has denied their permit. St. Cobain had an appeal on Thursday with the Merrimack Town Council. St. Cobain no-showed.
Okay.
So, this is, this is, this is all on its way to Superior Court already.
This is more, more than St. Cobain's. We've got a lot of other problems here in town with water.
And again, we're gonna have another meeting, they're gonna bring back more experts, and we're gonna do more. We, we said that, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay. And I've heard somebody say something about blood testing. I've heard Mr. Freeze here, I believe, say that that has to do with Pease Air Force Base, and other than that, did, did I misunderstand what you said?
So, what Senator Shaheen did was, she, she arranged for, if you were in the daycare or you worked in Pease Air Force Base, there was a program for you to have your blood tested out there.
I would ask about the town of Bedford.
There was some limited blood testing done in Bedford, Merrimack, Litchfield, Amherst, and a small portion of Londonderry. In line with what was said before, they actually had a terrible time getting volunteers. The ATSDR study that's running at Pease right now, they've had to go out three times with calls, they can't get volunteers. Everybody says they want blood testing until it's offered, but there was limited blood testing. The issue is, when you get the results, it's, your doctor doesn't have any way to look at it and say what they would do with those results.
Okay, but-
But, again, and, not to clarify, but DHHS took it out of their own budget for all the blood testing. The new study that started at Pease right now, that Senator Shaheen was able to go and get the money for.
I appreciate the correction.
But, but they spent out of hide an awful lot of money to do blood testing, and those results are published, they're available. And so, there is a sampling from this area, and then, there is a sampling from this area that is on MVD water.
Okay, so, perhaps I misunderstood what you said in regards to, oh, it's only got to do with Pease. Did I misunderstand?
The ATSDR study is only about Pease.
The blood test-
CDC study, which includes new blood tests, is-
CDC stands for what?
Centers for Disease Control.
Okay, right, okay, all right. I, I don't care who's doing the blood testing, as far as I'm concerned, if there's, needs to be blood testing taken, done, then the New Hampshire Department of Violent Services needs to step up and make sure that gets done.
We, we do not do blood testing, we do not do any human individual testing.
No, a laboratory does the blood testing.
We, we do not do, we test water, we test the other version of water. Health and Human Services does individual health-related data. We do not.
Okay, but the town of Bedford has some real problems with PFOAs and PFOSs that is, goes back to St. Cobain's, does it not?
Yes, and they did have blood testing, and those results have been published, so the population knows what an average for blood testing in that area is.
Okay, so, once again-
So, Ray, I, I got two more people that are gonna ask questions behind you, and then I'm just gonna stop asking questions, so.
One more. No, I probably got more than one. I'll let somebody else speak.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got two more people to ask questions, and then, we're gonna, we're gonna close public comment.
She's letting me jump in front of her, because mine's just real-
Okay, sure, no problem. No problem.
Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. John, since we're going to have something on arsenic, I think it would be good to invite the Department of Health and Human Services so they could speak to the blood issue that people seem to have questions about, and maybe they can come on that day and resolve some of those, that confusion and for that stuff. What do you think?
So, Clark, could you recommend an agenda around arsenic and public drinking water and arrange to bring the appropriate resources?
Sure.
That works for me. Okay?
Yep, thank you. Told you I'd be quick. I'll park up.
Okay. I, I don't know. She was pretty quick. I got, I got the stopwatch running.